Ready? We'll call the Stark County Commission on November 2nd, 2020 to order Tuesday. It's 9:00 a.m. We'll have a pledge first of all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first of all, the agenda, through the agenda, there's a revised agenda that DSCU, the Sanford Sports Complex is off, they'll be coming next month, and then we're also removing capital improvements funds, so the other thing else to the agenda, and look for motion to approve, if not.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Marsh, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Messer. Roll call vote, Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Artad.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander. Chair votes aye, motion carried. And we have the minutes for our last meeting at October 7th, 2021. Is there any corrections or changes to the minutes for October 7th? Now I'll look for a motion to approve.
Chairman, I don't know if it needs to represent on those minutes I was on the phone or not, because I was not present, I was on the phone.
On the second one.
That was the...
I thought this was the second, sorry.
This is the first one.
I got them mixed up.
Oh, I'll move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Messer to approve the minutes for October 7th, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second by Commissioner Marsh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Now we have the minutes for our special meeting on October 21st, 2021. Is there any corrections or... Now I'll look for a motion to approve the October 21st, 2021 minutes.
Guess I'll make a motion to approve October 21st minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Marsh, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Messer, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we have some discussion?
Okay, go ahead.
I am on... the last page of the special reports, and I guess my question is, is that the discussion in regards to whether Commissioner Messer or Commissioner Marsh had ever been privileged to review those two complaints? And then the chairman's comment that those expenses should have been brought up during the year. And I guess, just for clarification, the hearings on those matters was in October of last year, and so those requests that you're referring to were in fact brought up within a year. And my other question would be, has the two new commissioners ever gotten those?
I have.
I did as well. And that's just recently then?
Since the last meeting, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Franchek?
Yes.
Did you receive the actual bill to see the, did you actually receive the itemized bill?
Oh, what I received was the report, the investigative report.
If you would see the itemized bill and the cross-referencing of how Mr. Henning was not supposed to be involved, the cross-referencing of the investigator, the investigators, they were not supposed to speak, that's on the bill?
We did not see the bill itself.
Yeah, nor I.
There should be three people that get their money back for those expenses, for lawyer bills. I do not, I am not seeing anything on what ended up, the investigating reports, what ended up by them. That is not what I'm speaking about, I'm speaking about the process.
I guess we're getting off here a little bit on the minutes, or who are approving those minutes here?
Well, I have...
What we're discussing on the approval of the minutes.
One other question, if I may, Chairman?
Yes.
And then I, I see that Mr. Marsh, Commissioner Marsh, had made a motion to enter into mediation, and then the comment is, is that motion died for a lack of second. I haven't listened to the, to the minutes themselves, but I'm really foggy on that.
There was no second on it.
Yeah, there was no, no one second in that motion.
And you asked three times for a second?
I'd have to recall the readings, I'm sure, I don't know.
Pardon me?
I'd have to recall the, the minutes, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't remember that.
Well, maybe I would ask Commissioner Artad, as she was home attending to a sick child at the time, but did, did use the teleconference to attend the meeting, and, and I guess my question for Commissioner Artad is, if you recall any comment, or do you recall the, the motion and/or the request for, for a second?
I didn't really, I could not really hear what the motion was, I did not hear a request for second for three times, I didn't really even know what the motion was, because I couldn't hear. I do not remember it being called three times.
Well, I'd have no objections to approving the, these minutes with clarification that there seems to be some questions in regards to the procedure in which this was done, including the lack of a second to that particular motion, and if the chairman asked for a second, which would require him to ask for, for three, on three separate requests, which is the way it's always been done in the past. So anyhow.
Hold off on approving these minutes to our next meeting, is that what you're asking, or can check in to further?
I just wanted to make that point for the record.
Okay.
I'll call for the question.
Okay. Roll call vote, then, for motion to approve the minutes, roll call vote, Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Artad?
No.
Commissioner Zander?
No.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Next, go to the counts payable, is there any questions, accounts payable? No questions, the counts payable, look for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a quick question on the COVID pay line for the 17, I know we talked about COVID reimbursements recently, does anybody have a, where that went on the COVID line, the 17035?
Okay, the COVID expense, that includes the siren that was replaced, that was paid out of COVID funds, and that was approved at a prior meeting, if I'm not mistaken?
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll move to approve the bills as presented.
There was a supplement sent out too, right, Chair? And your motion then is to prove that with the...
Yes, with the supplement.
Okay. Motion, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Marsh, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Artad?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, just for a point of order, I would like to have it recorded that we do not have a state's attorney in the meeting this morning.
She's on the phone.
Currently, we do not have a state's attorney in the, in the room.
Ms. Engels, are you on the phone?
I'm, I'm here, I'm actually watching it on...
Okay.
Okay.
I, I am on the phone though, yeah, I'm on the phone and I'm watching it live, so...
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, then we'll go to the Sheriff, Corey Lee.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Highlights for the Stark County Sheriff's Department for the month of October 2021. Total calls for service in October, 1,389, this is significantly up from the year before at 1,182. At 185 traffic stops, this is up from 173 last year. 51 stops in the city of Dickinson, 134 stops in the county and neighboring small towns, 256 public relations stops, this is up from 188 last year. 11 bar checks, it's up from 10 last year. Eight theft-related calls for service, that's down from 10 last year. 16 canine usages, 25 agency assists, and we responded to seven accidents, which is kind of remarkably low actually, for, especially for this time of year, so glad to see that. 68 total arrests, we participated in a mock accident scenario at Richardson School, which they did a few years ago, and we, kind of something we brought back, that went very well, had the medicopter there, and fire, and ambulance, and rescue, and ourselves, so that went very well, kids seemed to enjoy that. That was held in conjunction with our homecoming activities. Our SROs spent numerous hours on safety presentations this month at all the schools in the county. Didn't have any incidents for Halloween, we had over 500 kids come to Trick or Trunk in Bellfield, we had a rough estimate of over 2,500 at the mall, and then I think we were well over 3,000 downtown. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Have you gone forward at all with your, your cameras and stuff, or what do you have?
Yes, they're ordered, or the process is moving ahead a little bit faster than we expected, actually, so...
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we'll go to the L.I.'s Road Department.
Good morning, everyone, just kind of what, rundown what the road department's up to, we're hauling gravel in the southwest part of the county, all the way down to the Kettering County line, we've hauling shale from out by the Speedway from there, Wayne's got a couple trucks over cleaning a pit up right by Taylor, so we can get a reclaim for this fall. We're crushing gravel over by Taylor, that's, I could tell Commissioner Messer that I've never been excited about finding a gravel deposit as them guys found over there, because it's in part of the county that we have no gravel, we haven't had gravel ever since I've been here, so that'll really help support the northeast part and the northern part of the county, so we're actively working on that. As far as bridges, we're, I'll let Eric kind of do most of the talking and that, but the bridge by county line is almost done, and we're working on some over by Bellfield on a bridge bundling program. And some of the concerns we have on that one over by Bellfield on the bridge bundling, it's getting late in the year, they still have one to put in, and that's the tougher one, so we've been in kind of contact with the DOT, and Eric will probably allude a little more on that. One other thing I have on the walking path, I've had lots of concerns from, it's out by Fluffy Fields, and you probably got a couple estimates in there, one is asphalt and concrete driver, I just wanted to kind of bring it up, because like I said, it's, it's a concern with, you know, now we got the nice paved road, and people like to walk on it that live there, and, you know, it's a road for traveling public, not actually for people to walk, so I just brought a couple options for you guys to look at, and if we need to do some more research on it, I guess that's, that's kind of up to you, I know there was a kind of letter of support from the people that live there. One thing about that subdivision, it's a long way from the city, you know, and there's no, no place to walk, and, and other subdivisions have the same issues too, so it's, it's something I brought up, you guys can talk about it, or whatever it you'd like to do, and just let me know. Anybody's got any questions? What's the length, oh, there it is, 4,000 feet.
So I guess I would have a question, Al, for you on the, on the walking path, it's not that, I would like to see us kind of look comprehensively at other areas that might have need, you know?
Sure.
So we can develop a plan and say, in '22, we can do this path, in '23, we can do this one, because I, quite frankly, I haven't looked at it that way.
Sure, I know we've had a request for out by Patterson Lake, going out to the west, only concern I have out there with, you know, that property is, is core property, and I think there's, they're in a process of people buying the lot, so I, you know, I don't, because once you cross the road, it goes up to the clubhouse, that's core property, because I know when we built that road, so I don't know if it's going to end up to be parking wrecks, or if it's going to be what, so, but, I mean, if, you know, we can sure do, you know, kind of look around and see, get kind of a plan for the rest of these. Because some of them are really difficult to build, because this one out here isn't so bad, because that's good high ground, but you get down, we get low spots and ditches, and, and it could be a lot more costly.
Well, and I know the city has the trail in that diamond, five diamond subdivision, or whatever it's called, on the corner of 10th Avenue East and 21st, and then you have a mile that's kind of in the gray, where one side of the road is city, one side of the road is county, and if we go out there, it would be kind of, long-term, it would kind of nice if you had.
And Mike maybe be able to talk a little more about connectivity with the city, because I think it could be in the cities, we'll let Mike talk about that a little bit, how, how it all connects together.
Yeah, I'd just like us to look at it from a...
Sure, like I said, I've had concerns from the neighbors that live out there, and I've brought it to you, so you're aware of it.
Valid point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have another question for you. On, on this walking path here, that's, that's the only option we have for it?
There's two options, there's one concrete and one asphalt, and the reason why the asphalt's a lot more, because you can only get the paver down so far, and you got to put more base under asphalt, so that one is quite a bit more, and I don't know which one's up there, that's the concrete?
The one over here is asphalt.
That's the asphalt.
I don't have, I don't have anything on concrete.
Well, I sent it out to Karen on Friday after I got it, so you should be in your package, but I guess it's, it's quite a bit cheaper, but...
But would be less maintenance, too, wouldn't concrete be less maintenance for the future?
Right. So we can, we can research it, and, you know, go a little more in, more in depth, and Mike can maybe allude how it could possibly tie in with the city.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion on this, otherwise we'll move on to Highland Engineering, then.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm Mike Ness, Highlands Engineering. Before we get in the path, working on the bridge replacement project southeast of Richardson, about 15 miles south, eight miles east, that project, we're, we've, we've got the groundwork done, the wetland delineation, cultural resource surveys, and the preliminary design surveys done, so now we're just working on the preliminary design and the environmental clearance, we're getting started on, so we get that project hopefully shelf-ready, if we get some more funding from the DOT. Shared use path, so as Al talked about, I did provide a concrete and an asphalt option, you guys don't have the concrete, the concrete option was only 235, 235,000, and that's because it was only six feet wide, and it requires less base, so that, that's why it's so much cheaper. As far as con, how it all ties together with the city, that portion east of 10th Avenue on 21st Street, it is all part of the, the city's comprehensive plan to go out there, pass Fluffy Fields, another 4,000 feet or so, so it's part of it, but definitely we need to do some coordination with them, and, and see what their plan is, I think in the comprehensive plan, that portion, that one-mile portion was supposed to be built in 20, by 2022, of course, this comprehensive plan was put together, I don't know how many years ago, eight years ago or so, so I think, I'm sure things have changed, but, yeah, that stretch there is, is really weird, the road is off of the section line, I believe the section line is to the north of the road, so most of it's county, but without doing a survey of that, you know, there's definitely some coordination to do, so...
City's currently updating their comprehensive plan, too, they're in the process.
Yeah. That portion out to the golf course and out to those lake homes, that is part of the comprehensive plan as well, so, but I agree, I think we should come up with a, a county comprehensive plan for trails themselves, and...
And there's been some issues too on Palm Beach Road, too, for traffic issue safety there, too?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Just a quick question on that, how are these walking trails that you're talking about, how is the ETZ zone currently and in the future affected by the, the walking path, and, and who's responsible for it at that point? If, if the walking path is in the city ETZ, does that mean it's the city's responsibility, and/or are, is the county still, would the county still be responsible for building it, maintaining that?
I believe anything outside the city limits would be the county's responsibility, even, even though it's in the ETZ.
Those portions that are inside the ETZ would be the city's responsibility?
No, I don't believe so.
No, no, that'd be ours. I mean, the current proposal that he's talking about, that is currently in the ETZ anyway, and so that was one question I was going to ask Al, and I apologize for not doing it, so would you just, during the winter, you would just take a broom out there if it's a six-foot wide, how would you handle cleaning that up?
We'd have to clean it, broom it off, or push it off, pending under the snowfall.
Okay. And you have equipment to do that?
We do.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions?
Nothing? Okay, last item on my, on my report here is the intersection of 116th and Highway 10, see if the improvements we discussed last, last month, Al, Todd, and I got together and came up with a plan to add a, add a few more stop signs, adding two on each side of Highway 10, the flashing ones, and then also the stop aheads, yeah, four, four of those total also, and to get a little more attention to people coming up, we did get their crash report for that, I think there was eight crashes in the last five years, most of them were from northbound, coming from the south.
That's the shocking part of it, we thought it was the opposite until we read the crash report, and that's wide open, so there was no excuse for them.
It's people coming up, coming up, you know, they might be following somebody, and they turn, you know, maybe they're doing a turn lane to the right, and they're coming, the other people are going straight, and I'm assuming this, but, and then they just don't look left or right close enough, and it's, they get T-boned.
It's usually people turning right.
Really? So, so I think we got a good plan together, and putting up some additional signs, another 45...
On both sides.
On both sides, and another 45 mile an hour speed sign north, so...
Great.
Other than that, we're doing some gravel testing on that Miller Bob pit over by Taylor that Al talked about earlier, so, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next, we'll do the Northern Plains.
Good morning.
Morning.
Obviously, I'm not Jeremy, I'm Eric Ernest with Northern Plains Engineering, just a few updates on some projects, so I'll start off with the construction projects, as Al talked about, the 30th Street Bridge up on the county line, we are actually blue-topping the subgrade today, and we hope to get that, that road opened, actually, either today or tomorrow, that was with Mark Construction, the other projects are, as Al mentioned as well, one is on 131st, northwest of Bellfield, and the other one is south and east of Bellfield, that's with Quality Dirt Works LLC, they plan on setting the one on 131st, the setting the box culvert today, we got a guy out there today watching that, and as Al mentioned too, we're kind of playing the weather by ear to see if we even really start that, that other box, we are waiting for an updated schedule from the contractor with that, and I guess we'll go from there and see how the weather plays out, and see if we even decide to open it up at all, so, any questions with that? Some design projects, the Richardson South Bridges is what we call them, that was, that's been done, kind of a set of plans on the shelf for that, it's actually slated for March bid opening, it was originally slated for November letting, the DOT didn't have enough funding for that, so it just got postponed until March, and then another one is, again, it's actually kind of confusing, so we have a construction project on 127th and 131st, have a design project on the same road, but this one is located three miles south and one mile west of Bellfield, and nine miles south and three miles east of Bellfield, that one's currently in the design, going through the around mail documents right now, and stuff like that, so... That's all I got, if any questions with anybody?
You have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll have Gladstone Fire Department, Terry Teal.
Connection here.
Just passing, yeah, it's just a, well, you saw on the PowerPoint. Okay, so I'm Terry Thiel, I'm a board member of the Gladstone Fire Department, and so we would like to come back to Stark County, Dunn County, just, just every year is an update also to know what, you know, what's going on, what we've been doing and how the year has gone for us. So you can see on, they're the board members, Galen Sikler is a president, Mike Borisma vice president, Danny Angers on the board, myself, Wayne Kaufman and Jill Warner with that. So the district size, and I put another map in there for you, approximately six to mi, nine miles going east to west, twenty-seven miles north to south, Stark and Dunn County. And there's currently a number of volunteer firefighters, about thirty-seven, thirty-five are male and two female, and one certified EMT. So our incoming expense, the budget funding for the, the fire district is the mill levy from both Stark and Dunn County. It averages about sixty-three thousand. That's a twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two estimates on that. Stark County would be about fifty-five thousand and Dunn County about seven thousand. Other funding sources are North Dakota Department of Fire Insurance Reserve, and that varies every year. We also do a fundraiser with the Gun Raffle to bring in about ten thousand, and then other grants that we can try to obtain. So it's right around that eighty thousand annually. So the expenses, the basic expenses are right around seventy-three thousand, eight hundred annually, and that can change each year. And then the projects that we do are basically through what we can find through grants, fundings, county requests and such, and those basic expenses are heating, the phones, the, the different, the gas, oil, things like that. So the review for the truck that is, will be coming up, the bid was accepted at four hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and four dollars, and that was done by Hyman Equipment, and it's a purchase of a one thousand, two hundred gallon pumper truck. And the original amount that we had started was three hundred and seventy-five thousand. The chief and some of the firefighters went through and of course then added some things that they're going to need with that. So the breakdown, basically, we did get a land trust grant of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred, which was half of that original bid that we started with. Stark County, you dedicate a hundred and eight thousand, eight seventy-five. Dunn County, fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five, and then our district about thirty thousand and the firefighters about twenty thousand, and that's expected to come in, in early twenty twenty-two. Some things have happened, obviously because of parts and things like that, supply chains, so that's what we're hoping for is sometime early twenty twenty-two. So review for twenty twenty-one, portable radios, we did a grant into the Southwest Regional Grant with the city for four portable radios, and that was approved. Truck radios, fifty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. Put in a grant into North Dakota Department of Emergency Services, received ten thousand, a possible additional fifteen thousand reimbursement, maybe coming back in to add to that. And then we also did a request into BNSF or a command vehicle for the fire chief, but that was denied. But however, back to that, the Humvee and Tahoe were donated by the Dunn County Commission. So when up there, they had an additional one that they weren't using, and so those two vehicles up at the top there that you see were refitted, repainted, decalled and that. There was a grant to Marathon Oil for that, so they approved ten thousand dollars, so that those were upgraded with some paint and decals and different things. There's a grass truck that was purchased, so the box was designed, installed at Dickinson Truck Equipment, a hundred and sixty-five thousand. A fire hydrant's just been put in on, out at the lot out there, so when they come up, they can fill right up at the fire hall, and that has also been added with a concrete pad, so they can drive up there. Gravel was put in and so that there's not anything over there for, you know, additional water if that gets in there. And then firefighting gear, we also did an additional four sets, a bunker and prairie gear for new firefighters that are coming in. Oops, let me go back here. So that's just a couple of them. That shows on the left was a Humvee, or excuse me, the Tahoe, and then the Humvee that was re-outfitted, the one we got from Dunn, two from Dunn County. And then other goals, we'd like to, we're working on a security camera system in and outside of the fire hall also, and then putting in a smoke alarm system to, just in case something were to happen out there. I believe there was another fire district within the state that had suffered some pretty severe restrictions with a, a truck because they had experienced their own fire. So future goals, and those will be within the next year or two, replacing the tank on the number one pumper, pumper truck, and replacing older trucks that, that are at the department. They're quite elderly, and then building a tower training unit out there near the fire hall, and then continuing to replace and upgrades equipment and gear. Just showing a little bit more of some of the gear that's there and people out at the fire hall. So truck inventory, I know I, I had this in there last year too. Currently, number one is nineteen sixty-one, that's the primary pumper truck, and this one that's coming will be the one that should be really replacing that one. The used Humvee, there's the grass unit, nineteen ninety-eight one, the eighty-six general tanker truck, the ninety-seven brush truck, ninety-seven tanker pumper grass truck, the Humvee. And equipment, Van Center, that was a used mobile bookmobile that had been converted. Number twenty, though, you'll see is the new grass truck that was constructed here in town. It's a five hundred gallon with capacity for compressed air foam system with that, and then those used Tahoe.
I have a question for you, Terry.
Mm-hmm.
On that, on that sixty-one, are you going to retire that then, or what, what's the plan for that one? Top one?
I don't, actually, I don't know what they're going to do with it yet. There, oh, go ahead, Joe.
Can you come up? Please, we can hear you, please.
Okay. That one there at nineteen sixty-one, we rebuilt it nineteen ninety-eight, so we'll probably just repurpose him and remove some of the other equipment that we have. He's still relatively usable, so until he burns out, then we'll probably just move on from him then.
There was one older, one truck that was removed off of here that, that they did, did sell as a miscellaneous income with that. So another photo of, out at the fire hall, two more of some of the units that are out there. And then there'll be a breakdown that you see there, and maybe, Joe, if you just want to talk a little bit about that, this is something that they file all the time. It'll do a breakdown showing how much was fires, seventy percent rescue in emergency medical services at the five percent hazardous condition, no fire at fifteen percent, and good intent call at ten percent with that. If there's any questions on that, we'll go on. Okay? The, a little bit more with some of the fire photos. I've asked some of the guys to, can you guys take some pictures while you're out there? So I have these, and I'm like, are you, no, we're a little bit busy out here. So I think next time I'll see if I can get in on a call and I can get some better pictures too. So a little bit more on the incident report that they do, things that the HE files again with the state, their arrival time, things like that. That is the new grass truck unit that they got this year. And then there's also during Fire Prevention Week, the fire department hosts an open house, educating not only the residents but also their children and how to get through a fire situation, so they're very intent on really working with the kids with that too, so that they're not scared of firemen, so that they know what the procedures are in case there is a fire at their residence. A little bit more there. This year was a, a really good year with that. We had a lot of attendance coming in. You can see that they hand out a, you know, the little, the little packets and things like that. You can see the amount of kids that are in there. Doug is showing two kids right over there, one of the heat sensor units, so they can tell when they go in the heat. So there was a large attendance with that. Here's another picture with everybody that day and all the kids and little trucks that are there. It's always been popular with them. And the ladies are great, we have to mention them. They are always the ones that come in and help wherever needed, whether we have the food, whether we have, you know, whatever, those, those gals have done a lot for us. And lastly, we'd like to thank you for your support, and again, just try to keep you guys informed of what's going on, so. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Or Joe. Yes?
Terry. Thank you for this report. I don't think we've ever, this is, this is the first time we've ever gotten this comprehensive report from a fire district, and, and so thank you to Joe and your department and you guys and your leadership. It's really nice. Thank you.
Well, and thank you. You know, we, we know we get the mill levies, we know there's times we've come, you know, to both counties with, with needs, and when we make the request, it isn't just to get money, to have money. And there are some times we've tried to make sure we've had a little bit of reserves in case something comes up, but I think just keeping people informed, you know, so that, and, and anytime if somebody'd like to come out to the fire hall or talk to anybody, please do so. These guys are doing a really great job, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
So these two are the vehicles that were donated?
Yes.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Best fireworks show I've seen in years, by the way.
Yeah. Yeah, no, they do a lot, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report there, and thank for all that department does. Thank you. Okay, next we have a public hearing, we're supposed to be at nine thirty, probably, on the delinquent property values. We'll open the public hearing, if there's any comment from the public on it. Any comment from the public on the delinquent property tax values? There's fourteen parcels. Anyone from the public have a comment on the delinquent property taxes, fourteen parcels that we have listed? Any comment to close the public hearing then on it? Now look for a motion to prove the.
I have a question, I guess, I don't know if, if I should do it now or after you make the motion, but I noticed one parcel is not there that was on the one that we had last month. I was just wondering if they just came and paid the tax on it or what.
I believe there was one that did came, conveyed their taxes current, so that was moved, right?
Okay.
Any other questions or?
So we're, we're looking at approving the recommended sales price values from the, the assessor's office that we're doing.
Yes, because last month we put it off because we had to put, know it's all to the cities first.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions here. On the first three properties on Fisher East Side, second subdivision lots one, two and three, we have a recommended sales price of fifty-two, fifty-two and fifty-five, six. If we're going to accept that, we need to kind of have a policy regarding special assessments. There, there are specials on those properties. I think they're each in the low twenty thousand range, anywhere from twenty-two to twenty-four thousand, and so just for our point of view, I mean, if we sell for fifty-two, for example, are we paying specials or are we expecting the buyer to assume the specials? So I think that needs to be part of our motion.
Think in the past, the new buyer assumed the specials on that, but.
Well, a lot of times in the past, we just deed the property over to the city and then the city did it, so. I mean, if I was making the recommendation based on what's there and on value, I would definitely say it should be fifty-two thousand plus specials.
Okay. Any other discussion?
One more.
Go ahead.
On the bottom, first page, two nineteen Fifth Street East. Are, are we going to end up cleaning up that mess? Have you been by there, Al, at all?
I think.
Go ahead. Just saying, Engels, stay, go ahead.
All right, I'm, I think I'm a little delayed here. I, I was just going to let you know under fifty-seven, twenty-eight, ten. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Under fifty-seven, twenty-eight, ten, it does state that all property acquired by the county by tax deed must be appraised, and the appraised price must be sufficient to cover all taxes, special assessments, home state credits for special assessment penalties and interest, so if that answers Neil's question.
Well, it, it kind of does. My point is if, if it's on the market for fifty-two thousand and we're paying off twenty-two or twenty-three thousand dollars with the specials, that's not reflective of market. The, you know, so fifty-two plus specials, I'm okay with that because the sellers did try selling them for more than that, ninety thousand plus specials, and did, was not, were not successful in getting those marketed, but I would, I would be opposed to us selling them for fifty-two and paying off the specials. That's my point, so. I just wanted to clarify our policy on that pricing.
Any other comment or discussion? And the one property at two nineteen Fifth Street East, there's occupied, that's been an eviction, they'll just sign on that. Not, and they'll look for a motion.
So do we need to add the specials on to those three instead of plus specials from what Amanda just said? Do we need to add that on there instead of doing it like this, plus specials?
Commissioner Artthod, there, there may be motivation on the buyer's part to want to assume specials, and I, and so I'm, I'm open either way. My point was I don't want to be a sell, have us sell those at fifty-two and then us be liable. I want it clarified and specific that we offer it that way, so.
Okay.
Could be part of the motion then, correct?
Sure.
Do we need to go individual?
I don't believe so. I think we can do it all at once, but you could have, you know, stipulate that the special, if they're special, that's added on to it.
If there's no other discussion, I would move that we accept the recommended minimum sales prices as per the assessor's office to include that the first three properties, the lot one, block four, lot two, block four, lot three, block four, and Fisher's East Side, second subdivision, be posted as the minimum sales price and the buyer would assume any and all specials.
Okay, I have a motion. Commissioner Messer, I have a second.
Second.
My second by Commissioner Artthod. Any other discussion? Roll call vote then. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Artthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Chair of votes, I, motion carried. Okay, and we'll take a break until ten o'clock.
And zoning, Mr. Josephson, you stiff one?
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Josephson, County Planner. The Planning and Zoning Commission held their public, held their meeting last Thursday, and there were two public hearings. The first one was for, was for a rezoning. It's RZ 0821. It's located in the northeast quarter of Section 15, Township 140, Range 95, approximately 12.23 acres. Mike Fisher was requested a rezoning from agriculture to agricultural residential. The planning and, both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended, recommended approval. Wanted to see if Chairman Franchuk wished to add anything to that.
No, no, the rezoning, but he objected to anything. It was, everything was fine, yeah.
Okay. So the recommendation was for, you know, as I said, from Planning and Zoning and the county, and the staff was approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, or Mr. Josephson? Not, then I'll look for a motion to approve RZ 0821 for Mike Fisher.
I'll so move.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Xander, I have a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Marsh. Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion carries.
The second item was a, it was actually a zoning amendment. It was amendment to the zoning ordinance, ZTA 0212. It was amendments to chapter, to Article 8, and it would be if somebody, that's the section about the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it covered if an applicant wished to request a continuance for an application. It set out some procedures for that. Before I proceed on this, the question that Commissioner Franchuk and I had for the state's attorney is, as of yesterday morning, she had not had a chance to review the draft, and was asking, you know, the state's attorney if she had had a chance to review that yet.
Ms. Engelstad, were you able to review that at all, or?
There were some amendments, the reason we ask is there, before getting into this, is there were some amendments to this that were made at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. I did take a, a quick look at it yesterday. I didn't have a lot of chance to really kind of dive deep into it, but it looked like all of the amendments that were originally discussed at Planning and Zoning were, were in it. And I guess I didn't see anything that I took real issue with, or that I thought would be unworkable.
Okay.
I will leave that up to, let me hand that out with the amendments. And I'll leave it up to Chairman Franchuk if, if this is going forward today.
Yeah, we'll go ahead with it, then it's if she, our state has no objection to it. You just want to review then the changes where they're, because they got the original one, but the changes.
Thank you.
You got in your pack at the original, but there was three changes that was added to the Planning and Zoning that wanted to change on there, so Mr. Josephson will go over those.
Okay. At the, if you've had a chance to review this, you know, so the idea is that there's actually a procedure in place, so if an applicant requests a continuance to something that had been submitted to, you know, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that it would actually have procedures here. There were three changes that were made, three amendments that were made by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The first one is under, under continuance by right, where it says, "A request for continuance by right shall not exceed 60 days from the original scheduled public hearing date." And then if you go to the last page, one of the amendments made was that if there was a continuance, that the cost of republication of notice of public hearing in the, in the official newspaper of the county, that cost would be borne by the applicant, or by their unauthorized representative. And then there was also what ended, added at the end that said, the, the way this was going to work was that if an application had not been heard within six months of the subsequent continuance, the application would be considered withdrawn, and the applicant would have to start over. And there were concerns that there were things well beyond the applicant's control, you know, so there was a provision put in here that would actually allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to waive the withdrawal requirement if it was determined that there were extraordinary circumstances preventing the application from being heard. And then at that time, the Planning and Zoning Commission would set a date for the hearing of that application. So those were the three amendments that were made to this. And then just a clarification from the state's attorney is, is if this is approved, if this is approved and goes through the 30-day comment period, is with, what applications would this affect?
Um, I, sorry, Steve, I, I'm having a little bit of a tough time. Can you repeat that? It was something about the 30 days.
Yeah, after this becomes effective, what applications would this, would this apply to? Would this apply to any that are in the process right now, or would it apply to any that are subsequently submitted after this is, this is approved?
Uh, I, I guess I, one, after the 30-day waiting period, I think that it should apply to any of them that are, that are out there, that are on the, I guess, on the queue right now.
Okay.
One thing I did want to say quickly is, under the continuance by right, it says that a request for continuance by right shall not exceed 60 days from the originally scheduled public hearing date. I think it would be prudent to add or closest Planning and Zoning dates, you know, to, to that 60 days, in case you run into the scenario where, you know, it's, it's 60 days and the Planning and Zoning meeting is on like the 63rd day, so you're not having to schedule it, you know, that month, and that month prior.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions?
I got a comment.
Yes.
On the, the third correction on the bottom of the second page, just some of the language here. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission may waive, I, I think that, that word "may", I, I, I think it's inappropriate to be there. I think it should say, "will waive the withdrawal requirement if it is determined there are extraordinary circumstances." So I, I, again, it's, it's just one word, but that one word opens up a whole lot of different dialogue.
Steve, I think that the deal is on there, we have the option to, if you say "will", then we're required to do that, then.
Not necessarily, because if you read the rest of it, it says, you know, "waive the withdrawal requirement if it is determined there is an extraordinary circumstance." So it, it's not an automatic, it just, um, I, again, I just don't like the word "may" in there, and I think it needs to be withdrawn with, and replaced with the wording "will waive."
I think that's a valid point.
I would disagree with that. I think "may" is a discretionary word that allows for the discretion of the Planning and Zoning. And then if you have "will" or "shall", it's, it's a must, that they must do that. So the "may" leaves that discretion or that decision up to, to the board.
It, it still is up to the board, because the following explanation in that same sentence says, "if it is determined there are extraordinary circumstances." So.
Yeah, and so, so that makes it uniform, that, that they, they may waive it if there's extraordinary circumstances. It's saying that they don't absolutely have to. It would be up to the discretion of the board, and that's a small, small subsection of the, of the continuances, because, you know, they come in front of, they already get one continuance just by right, the second one they have to ask the commission for, are the Planning and Zoning, and will have, you know, six months, or whatever it is. And then it, what that last language essentially is saying is that if there's an extraordinary circumstance that comes up, and you've already got your continuance by right, and you've already gotten a continuance approved by Planning and Zoning, and Planning and Zoning has the discretion, it may, at its, at its will, if, if you can show that there are extraordinary circumstances as to the reason why, then we would allow, you know, another continuance essentially.
Well, I don't like it, and I think it leaves an opening for discrimination then,
Mr. Josephson, if you want to come back up, I got a couple of questions for you. I know that, so if I submit an application to you for a rezoning process, that's considered the application date? I'm sorry, did you? So if I submit something to you, or anybody submits something to you for a rezoning application, the, the one that you just had in front of us previously on the Fisher one, is that considered the application date? Or is the first time it's heard at Planning and Zoning? I see what you're saying. So the first time, you mean, from the continuance date, that would be the first time that it was scheduled to be heard in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission? Is that the application date? That's not the application date. The application date is the date that we actually receive something. Right. But that's not, that's not what this is addressing.
Mr. Josephson, this is addressing the date that it's published.
The date that it's published, yes.
Yes, the date that it's published.
The date that it's published, yes. Okay. So if, if, in the continuance by right, if the county receives something in writing five business days prior to the, you know, prior to that public hearing date, then the, the first time, it would be a continuance by right. If they don't get it in by then, then they've got to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for a continuance. And from here on in, if they need future continuances, they would come to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for a continuance.
Okay. I'm just a little concerned. I, I agree with the premise here, but I'm just a little concerned that we're trying to address one issue with this ordinance, or change in ordinance. And I, I guess, being in that industry where I've been in front of Planning and Zonings, there's a lot of reasons that these things can be changed for any number of reasons. And so I don't want to restrict future things to deal with one thing. I, I mean, I, I understand why this is here, and the language doesn't necessarily create any issues for me, but I'm thinking outside the box. I could see where at some point that we're going to challenge future applications from individuals in order to deal with one application that we have in front of us now.
Commissioner Messer, that's why we put in the last one, because we had talked about that at Planning and Zoning, so that's why, where this is, so that's why we had put in that we can give an extension past the six months.
Okay. And I, I appreciate that, and I hope the intent ends up being policy, yeah, so, no problem.
Okay.
Steve, we had the 90-day policy, I'm sorry, I, I thought I brought my notes from the Planning and Zoning meeting, when we brought up the 90 days.
And that's not what, that's not what needed into the minutes.
Yeah, we decided with the 60, you're talking with the first quick change.
Okay. I will look back on that, because that's what I thought we made the motion on, was the 90, not the 60, but I will look back at that.
Any other discussion or comment?
I'll make a motion to pass ZTA 02-21 as amended at the October 28th meeting, with the possibility of amendments, when I look back at our notes, what we actually passed at the meeting.
Okay, you have a motion, do I have a second?
You know, I would ask the state's attorney about that.
If you want to amend it, then we have to go through the full process again, and I guess I was the one who originally said somewhere between 60 and 90 days, and if I remember correctly, it was Commissioner Richard and a few other people, and Commissioner, I guess I thought you were one of them too, that thought 90 was too long, and that it was, it should be a 60-day continuance on the continuance of, the original continuance of right.
You know, if there's, let me just make a suggestion, okay? I mean, if there, if there's question about that, you know, I don't know when the next county commission meeting is scheduled for, but if you want to verify that, you know, this could always be tabled until the next county commission meeting to make sure, you know, just to check that and verify that.
Mr. Josephson, that's fine.
That's just a suggestion.
That's fine, if it's the, the 60 days instead of the 90, I'll just make my motion to approve this without any amendments.
Besides the one that, that, that the state's attorney.
Besides the other three.
And the one that the state's attorney read in today.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Commissioner Messer. Any other discussion?
So the motion is to approve the, without the change?
My motion is to approve the three changes that, in the red, the three amendments in the red, and to add in what Ms. Engelstad said, "The request for the continuance by right shall not exceed 60 days from the originally scheduled public hearing date or closest Planning, Zoning, and meeting date."
Okay, clear. Any other discussion or comment, question? Not, roll call vote, then Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thanks. Ms. Davenport, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, I apologize that I can't be there in person today. My first item on the agenda is the revised Local Emergency Operations Plan Resolution Adoption. I hope that you all had an opportunity to look at the LEOP. It's quite long, I'm not sure if it was printed out for you, if it got emailed to you, but what I'm asking for today is basically a resolution to adopt that LEOP for the county. The majority of the LEOP was worked on and developed by the previous Assistant Emergency Manager. That was done in 2020. So this year, myself and the current Assistant Emergency Manager went through, we made just some minimal changes to, basically on the back of the LEOP, there's some task coordinators, people that would take care of issues when we're going through certain phases of the LEOP, such as recovery and preparedness phases. But other than that, there were a lot of changes from what the previous Assistant Emergency Manager had done for us. So if you have the resolution in front of you, it's just asking you to adopt that for all the cities within, or county, and put that into place. And then, once it's adopted within the county, we will go to each of the cities and have them hopefully adopt the plan as well.
Okay. You have a question, Mr. Xander?
I'd like to offer a motion for Chairman Franchuk to sign the resolution in reference to the Emergency Operations Plan as presented today, November 2nd.
And I will second that, and I would like to thank you, Shawna, and thank you for getting this updated, as it was well outdated as of last year, and I would like to also thank Sheri for when she worked over there and got all of this updated.
Okay.
Yes, mostly Sheri, so I'm really appreciative to Mrs. Valtso, this is huge accomplishment from her.
Okay, a motion, a second, any other discussion or comment? Roll call vote, then Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Then we go in, next is the revised COVID plan.
Okay, and for this plan, as you know, we had our, our current COOP plan, and that plan was based off of the North Dakota Smart Restart Color-Coded Grass, which is no longer being used by the state, so it made our plan basically void. So I just rewrote a plan, we need to have one in place, as we are, of course, as you know, receiving those ARPA funds, and also still in a pandemic, so the plan is very basic. I hope you had a chance to look at it. It just covers simple guidelines within the county, distancing if we are able to, the option to use masking for those employees that choose to, departments making sure their employees are staying home if they're sick, et cetera. And then it also references employees using the, whatever the HR policy for their leave or sick time, whenever that's applicable to the COVID policy. There really isn't anything new information-wise in there, but it's just replacing that old policy and cleaning up some of that information. Should we have any questions for me?
Ms. Davenport, and that, that COVID is, then that is done December 31st of this year?
What was that?
Is that policy then for COVID, for vac, or for sick leave for COVID, that was, in this plan, is it done on December 31st of this year?
This one won't cover any sick leave, so this one is just for basically monitoring workplace controls. The other one for sick leave, I believe on, on the HR end, I, I think that you did in that on December 31st, as far as I remember, I might want to double check that with Mrs. Percy.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
We need to take action on?
We need to, yeah, make a motion to approve this.
Yeah, I would say you would have to make a motion to replace the previous policy with this current policy.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Then next, we have the burn ban revised, revision, revision of the burn ban.
Okay, for this, I had my monthly meeting a couple of weeks ago with all the fire chiefs from the county, and we discussed the current burn ban, and they all are on the same page that we're at a point now where we feel like we can go back to the original burn ban where the fire index would only apply if we were in the high, very high, or extreme category. They are, however, feeling that they still would like to see large controlled burns and garbage pits not being allowed at this time, so that would be new verbiage that would be brought into the, the burn ban. So I don't know if you want to discuss that portion of it, and then there's another also verbiage that I added in. If you look at the bottom of the proclamation, it's, used to say that there would be just a $1,500 fine, but I discussed with the state's attorney, and we also added in that restitution of fire suppression costs may be sought from the court as well. That is also on Dunn County's burn ban, so it was just a little extra something that we could add just to try and keep people from violating this, basically. Does anybody have any questions for me, thoughts on this?
I have one. So the restitution of fire suppression costs would include firefighters' time?
Um, it would, it would just be like their, if they used any equipment, or like foam, or any, whatever they used to put it out.
So with this motion then, Shawna, like with farmers that are going to do some burns, and with garbage, or anything like that throughout the winter, so then we would have to come back and amend this, amend this, for them to do that throughout the winter if there's snow?
So they, they can do it in the low or the moderate categories, so they can do it in the green or blue categories.
Okay.
They just couldn't do these large controlled burns, they wouldn't be able to do, unfortunately, because of the fact that we're having problems with them getting out of control, and they, they're not watching them, and then they end up sparking back up, and we're just not comfortable with the dry conditions out there. So, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I guess I, I spoke incorrectly on that. So for this one, we wouldn't be able to let them do that, and it's another part of my question for you, my second part of this is the authority discussion. Because of the fact that these conditions change so quickly, I had a discussion with the state's attorney and also with the fire chiefs, and what I would like to propose to you is perhaps putting together a committee of fire, these fire chiefs and myself, and giving us the authority to change the burn ban in between your commission meetings, instead of having to wait for an entire month to come before you to make these changes. Because right now, when things change, they, they could change in the middle of the month, and I'm having to wait until a month to talk to you, whereas we could just put something out, meet as a committee, talk to these experts, we could all decide and then make a change relevant and have the chair, chairman sign based off of what the committee has decided. Now, that doesn't mean that we couldn't put in verbiage in there, that obviously the commission could override that decision, or make a decision like for the Fourth of July or something like that, but it would just be easier when the way that the weather changes so often, and also we have people that on, that are fire chiefs that get information on the weather going out weeks, just because of their positions with the state and other things like that. So it would just be a lot easier in that respect to be able to make that change with this, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Could we not, so if, if I understand this correctly, the language of the burning of garbage pits and large controlled burns is not in the above-mentioned paragraph currently, right? So the, the burn ban takes effect when we're in the high, very high, or extreme category or a red flag warning. The way it looks there is that we're excluding, I don't know what we're, what risk we are in today, but the way it looks, are we just saying, we can't, you can't burn garbage pits and large controlled burns at this time? Couldn't we somehow incorporate that in the above paragraph, so that it's all encompassing to include fireworks, garbage, campfires, all this kind of stuff, or am I overreading into that?
I, I'm sorry, you were cutting out on my audio, and I, I heard you say that, can we put it up top? We could, but I, I mean, all it's basically doing is pulling that out, because we want to be able to give people a chance to have, to burn in the, the green and blue category, basically, like a blue category, basically, like a barrel, for instance, or have their campfire in whatever they want to do in those four categories. We just don't want them to have these huge garbage pits and huge controlled burns that often go for several days. And then we get into a high or very high category, and they can get away from us. And that's where we run into trouble.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I think that with the proposed change with the committee, with Shawna and the fire chiefs, I mean, the fire chiefs have the knowledge and the ability to make those decisions with the burning. So I agree that we could, I agree as a commissioner that we could let the fire chiefs and the committee make that change in the middle of the month.
Okay. I guess I'd look for a motion then to approve this burn ban proclamation and with the changes to the committee making decisions.
I'll make a motion to approve this burn ban proclamation with the proposed amendment of Shawna and the fire chiefs forming a committee to be able to change the burn ban in between of county commission meetings with the notification of the chairman to sign off on it.
Okay, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Arthod, second by Commissioner Zander. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, then. Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Okay, thank you all. I really appreciate your time today.
Thank you for all you did.
And I just, Shawna, are you still on?
Yes, I'm here.
Chairman, I would just like to say that Shawna did apply for another grant that she was awarded this last, I know this isn't on the agenda, but I would just like to thank her. She looked for a grant, and she did get awarded another grant for the radios, for the Siren Project. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. No problem. Have a good day.
You too. Thanks. Next, then, we'll go to amend to the harassment conduct policy of HR. Joetta Piercey, please.
Good morning. Joetta Piercey, HR Director. Amanda and Dean came forward and...
Neil, I think it was.
Sorry, yes, it was Neil. I apologize, Neil. With some proposed language for when there's a complaint against a commissioner or an elected official. And I thought it would fit nicely within our harassment conduct policy, because under the investigation section. So when there is a complaint brought forward, first, we would determine whether it was an elected official or commissioner who it involved. And if that was the case, we would get a third party involved, probably from the North Dakota Association of Counties, a representative, to look at that, starting the investigation. When, when they had findings, they would give those to Amanda, our state's attorney. If they had merit, she would bring it forward to the county commissioners, and a recommendation would be presented. The county commission would have the final decision. And actually, she would, I guess I skipped number two there. The state's attorney will review the information and decide if there's merit. If found there is not merit to the complaint, the state's attorney shall notify the board of that finding. If found there is possible merit, the state's attorney shall request the assistance of a state's attorney from another county that is independent of Stark County. The recommendation will be presented to the board of county commissioners, who will make the final decision. And so if the board acts against the commissioner or elected official, and the commissioner or elected official wishes to pursue further legal action, then that, that time, they can retain and hire their own personal attorney at their own expense. So if legal action against Stark County is successful and the attorney's legal fees are ordered, Stark County shall reimburse that amount. But if legal action against Stark County is not successful, Stark County retains the right to request attorney's fees from the commissioner who brought legal action. And then there is number six. If action is negotiated and settled outside of court proceeding, a majority vote of the sitting county commission must approve the settlement at a public hearing in a separate action outside the approval of monthly resolution of bills. So it kind of goes through the process of how we would investigate.
Then the state's attorney's role in this whole thing is, if she finds merit to the complaint, is just to find another attorney to take care of it? Or how is that going to work?
Mm-hmm, yes, to work together, to move forward. Probably have that state's attorney look at it, see if they see merit, and make a recommendation to the county commission on how they should move forward.
Any other comment or questions?
Chairman, I have a whole lot of comments. When you're elected as an elected official, you're elected to do your job. You're elected to make sure you go to your department heads as a portfolio holder. One portfolio holder, one person, you're going to explain, one person with verbal. So if you walk up to them and say you're not doing your job, are they going to say, oh, that's verbal abuse? If you go up to another person and psychological sense, well, how are they going to think of it? Is that that? This is, I mean, I would definitely need to go through this more. You're tying the hands of elected officials. Because this is what we are elected to, is to go to those department heads and not be scared to go to those department heads and say, hey, can we update this because it hasn't been updated for 10 years? Can, maybe can we do this? I think this would be better for the county. And are they going to all of a sudden go, oh, that's harassment, look at this policy? You're tying the hands of elected officials with this kind of verbiage in this policy.
And that's when you look at it.
I disagree. This, this portion of it has absolutely nothing to do with that. There's a whole portion already that deals with filing up complaints against elected officials. It defines harassment, it defines toxic workplace, it defines sexual harassment. And that's, all this does is provide a avenue for a workplace complaint to be filed so that there is absolutely no conflict of interest, which was the major issue the last time around. This is just saying, all this does, the complaint's going to get filed no matter what. If someone thinks there's toxic work environment, they're filing the complaint. That's, that's already a done deal. All this does is kick it outside of the county so that whoever's actually looking at the complaint and deciding and looking at what's being complained about is looking if there's merit to it or not.
Well, then, let's just write that.
This has nothing to do with the actual process of the complaint being filed.
Ms. Ingles, dead all due respect, then let's just write that.
It's already, you already have that.
Well, I mean...
That's already within your policy.
Exactly. We don't need all of this for elected officials and department heads.
Well, I guess I disagree. I think that we do, because the whole, the major concern last year was that the people that were doing the investigating or were involved in the toxic work environment had a conflict of interest. All this does is take out that conflict of interest. That's all it does.
Well, then, that's what should be written down and not all of this extra. I mean, there's jokes or comments.
That, that, that is what's written down. I, I mean, I don't know what else you want me to put in there to say that there, someone that doesn't have a conflict of interest needs to investigate? Well, that's what it says. It says if there's a complaint that's filed, HR will see who it's filed against. If it's against an elected official, they immediately find someone outside of the county to look into it, to see, to do the investigation. Once the investigation is complete, it comes back to me to take a look at, to see if there's merit. If there is, I kick it out to another state's attorney to say, hey, take a look and see if there's merit to this. And then you make a recommendation to the board on what should be done. So that's, that's, I wrote a policy to address exactly what everyone was concerned about last year, with Tom being part of the HR and HR being within Stark County. That's, that's all this does, is kick this out of the county so there's no perceived conflict of interest. And then it gives an avenue for a commissioner to potentially ask for their attorney's fees to be paid for if they hire one.
So, Joetta, are the first three pages that are included in the handout, those are, that's current policy?
Yes.
So what we're looking at amending is starting, my pages aren't numbered, but I believe it's the fourth page, under the underlined language.
Mm-hmm, we already, yeah.
Items one through six are the proposed changes.
Yes, we already had investigation and confidentiality, and then we added investigation involving a county commissioner or other elected official.
Okay, thanks.
It's a little different process.
Any other questions or comments?
Still processing something here, I'm sorry.
I think this needs to be tabled so I can look at different counties. I would like to look at their different policies. Because, you know what, all of this was in the handbook, and it was still done wrong the last time. So...
I guess, which is what I'm trying to fix. This, in my opinion, gives an extra added layer of protection to the elected officials. It allows these complaints that get filed, if they are any filed, and the investigation to be done from an outside unbiased source so that there are no issues with any sort of conflict of interest or anything along that nature.
I...
Yes, go ahead.
I would, you know, first of all, you know, I like the idea of cleaning up the policy, I really do. And, but, you know, I spent not a lot of time, but I have a lot of questions. And so I, I'm not prepared to, to make a decision on it. I'd like the opportunity to, to voice some of my concerns with the HR and State's Attorney's Office to maybe clarify things for me and/or offer some additional ideas.
I don't have any problem with that. I actually would encourage all of you to reach out to other counties and see if they have a policy somewhat like this, because I have, and, and nobody does. They were somewhat shocked by the fact that I was writing something like this that even contemplated these kinds of things. So, yeah, I would actually encourage all of you to reach out to different counties and ask about their policies with these kinds of things, and see if they have any sort of policy for attorney reimbursement, because none of the ones I have, I have talked to have said absolutely not. So...
Because they haven't went through something like this, or attorney bill, so that's probably why.
I think that's, that's not true. I mean, there's, those things happen in other counties. But, you know, there's, you can see from, you know, there was an individual up in Watford City, in McKenzie County, a sheriff that they tried to remove, he did not get his attorney's fees paid for. It's not a thing that happens at all. And I'm trying to write a policy so that there is some sort of, you know, an option when people feel like they've been wronged. But it, it, it does, I can almost tell you, it does not exist in the state of North Dakota. From the state attorneys that I have reached out to, they have all told me that they wouldn't even contemplate it. But I encourage you to reach out to other counties to ask about it.
Well, in some cases, the, for instance, and I'll just use this as an example, I do know that, because I passed law enforcement, the North Dakota Peace Officers Association does provide legal expense for law enforcement officers in different, different circles.
And that's their separate, like, union or their post, but...
Well, but, but the point I'm making is that...
This particular sheriff had went in front of the county commission and asked for his attorney's fees, and, and they had said no. And I believe he sued on it, and the Supreme or the court said, we have no reason to award you any of these. So...
Well, I'm not going to argue this point with you, Amanda. I'm just pointing out that there is, was, is other forms of recovery for different, for different people, different employees through their associations.
Yep, I agree with that.
So anyhow, that's all.
Any other discussion or comments or questions?
I'll make a motion that we table this.
A motion to table, I have a second.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, go ahead with your discussion then.
Well, I think all our policies are a, you know, work in progress. And so if we want to tackle this and continue to work on it, I have no problem. Again, the history of this was to bring something forward for our review and digestion and either, you know, rejection, approval, or amending. So if we want to do this and defer it a little bit, that's fine.
I would only be making one request then, in follow-up to Commissioner Messer's remarks that I, I would like to request some time with HR and Commissioner Messer, because I, as I understand it, along with state's attorneys are the three that put this information together. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, I, I wrote the majority of it, and then, yes, Commissioner Messer and Ms. Piercey had input on crafting it, yes.
And then, you had made a comment earlier, Amanda, that, that through phone calls you were making to other counties, they were somewhat perplexed as to why you were doing this?
Yeah.
And...
Why we would even have a separate policy, or why I was even contemplating putting something in that would deal separately with commissioners or elected officials or attorney's fees.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I just think it's a good start, but it needs, needs the direction we're going, I guess, so.
Any other discussion?
So did they mean on that, Ms. Ingles, that the commissioners were better protected in those counties? Or what did they mean by that?
They just said that their HR policy is, applies to everyone, and they follow it for every employee. There's no, like, special treatment for elected officials or commissioners. So if there's a complaint, their HR person investigates it, goes up to their state's attorney, who makes recommendations, and they go from there. I crafted it, again, based on all of the issues that we had last year, to try to make sure that there was no, you know, perceived conflict, or there was no issues, and to kick it out of the county so that there could be no, you know, allegations of bias or anything like that. So...
Did you inform those state's attorneys that the state's attorney here was HR?
Well, I think that that's going to be, I mean, that's, there's always going to be some crossover, because sometimes HR bleeds into the law, or into the, into the law. Sometimes there's things that are going to happen if there's certain types of claims, harassment claims, that can turn criminal in nature, or that, you know, other things that could be, that could, you know, trigger legal issues come into play. So I...
What I meant to say is, did you tell them that Tom, that our state's attorney was also HR, is what I meant to say?
I don't remember the exact conversation that I had. I know that we had an HR person at the time, and I know Ms. Krabs was handling the majority of that, because I did reread the report the other day, and the complaints were made to HR, to Ms. Krabs. And I know that Tom was made aware of them because of, you know, issues that could go back and forth. So...
This will, excuse me, we'll call the, uh, November 2nd meeting of the Stark County Park Board to order. Um, our first id- agenda item is to ratify the agenda and make any changes or additions. We're going to have a motion to ratify the agenda.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we ratified, that we ratified the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Uh, minutes of the last meeting, October 7th, you all have them attached. Any additions, deletions, corrections?
And move we accept the minutes as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we accept the minutes as printed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, the next is the County Parks Director Report. Lisa, you have the ch- you have the floor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me here? Lisa Heiser, County Parks Director. Um, just a quick couple of things for you. Um, today they actually are moving the bridge, if you recall it a few meetings ago, almost a year, um, that we are moving that bridge to connect the two facilities from the, um, dirt move. So that's being done. It'll be moved out there today, but only set on Thursday or Friday, um, with Black Hills Trucking. So the footings have all been poured. So if you haven't been out there, drive out there and see it. It's, it's kind of fun to look at it. Um, I'm booking well into 2022. I'm working right now with the Home on the Range to book, um, a fundraising event for their facility. Um, looks like a barrel race probably, but that's what they're, they're looking to do. Um, I've actually booked another weekend into the indoor arena that isn't slated to be built yet. So we're booked 14 weekends, um, that, for that building once it is built. Um, and then the other thing that I just needed to request, um, was out-of-state travel for approval of that to go to Billings, um, the Rocky Mountain Fair event. Um, it's basically a convention for fairs so that we can book, um, different things there, learn different things about the fairs and, and what we're doing. So, um, Commissioner Marsh will be going and then there's three others from the Fair Association that'll be going as well. And that's to Billings, Montana. And that's November 18th, 19th, 20th?
Thought it was the 9th, 10th.
Maybe it is. The, yes, you're right. Cause the other one is, um, the North Dakota Fair one is the following week. Yep, you're correct. Yep. So I'll need a motion for that if you guys saw.
I'll make a motion to approve out-of-state travel for...
For?
Four people?
Just me.
Oh, just you?
I'm in the Old Lake County, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Cause you don't need that, right?
For Ms. Heiser to go to Billings.
Uh, if, if the, uh, department is picking up their expenses, then we should authorize those people to also...
We are not picking up their expenses. The Fair Association is. Uh, Mr. Marsh sits as the, um, representative for the Fair Association. So the Fair Association is doing that. But I'm going in a capacity of work and so, um, that'll be what they'll do.
I second that.
Thank you.
It moved and seconded that we, um, authorized to pay for Lisa's travel to the convention in Billings. Um, roll call vote, Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Carla.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Jason.
Hi.
Jason. Sorry.
Forget you over there.
You're too far away, man.
Thank you.
No, I'm fine over here.
Do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Oh, thank you. So, I see we, we have none on the old business, but I, I do have one thing that I would like to comment on as far as old business and it, and it refers to the Friendship Park. I have a pretty good friend that's on the city, um, Parks and Rec payroll. He's, he's one of their employees and he works directly with the park. He says that that park will be the most used park in Dickinson if we build it, if it gets built. He says it isn't going to be just handicapped kids that are using it. He said it's, it's a real, really, really good design and concept. And he said the usage is going to be phenomenal. So just thought that's something that we should know about. I don't know if we're going to take any action on it, but I think we just wanted to pass that information along. So we'll go to new business. Brad, you have the floor.
Hello, Brad, Rough Rider Motorsports. We, oh, we operate the Speedway, Motocross Track and basically the, uh, motorsports park. Um, we just kind of just wanted to go over an overview of the season because it kind of came to an end here two weekends ago. So we had three motocross races, which four were scheduled. One got surprisingly rained out. But, um, you know, we had roughly in those three events, between eight and 900 people that came through the gate. Um, we had 12 Speedway races, um, the largest being the North Dakota Mod Tour, which I think there were roughly 900 and some people that came out. Um, and then we did, I know Lisa, they had planned on doing the, um, the monster truck show there at the fairgrounds and some scheduling changes came up. So we ended up having it at the Speedway and it was a phenomenal show on our end. There was 1,438 people that came through the gate and we couldn't take another person. It was packed. Um, last weekend we did a, um, mud run tough truck race, which it was cold. So there wasn't that many people that showed up. The people that did loved it. So we're going to keep going with that. Um, probably do a December, not mud run, but tough truck event, um, in the winter months, just to see if we could utilize something in that facility in the winter months. Um, that being said, we did have a go-kart track built that we did not get to utilize like we would have all summer long. Um, Martin Construction built it. They donated their time, their efforts. There are two light poles that I'd like to see built and I have s- or moved. I have some pictures here just from, from what we had. There's two light poles that... If you're an adult, you can definitely not have an issue, but we have kids from five and up. And if they hit one of those, it's going to be a bad situation. So I would like to see the light poles moved, you know, and they don't have to be moved a substantial amount. I mean, 10, 12 feet. Um, we want to utilize that facility more than just a Speedway, obviously. Um, we've already, uh, last weekend we met with the North Dakota Motocross Association. We have two of their races scheduled, four of ours. We will do another 12 races on the motocross side and then, or on the Speedway side. And then we would like to do probably six of these tough truck races and 12 go-kart events. So the go-kart thing is blowing up here in western North Dakota. Mandan's building a track. Um, we obviously have two tracks just here in Dickens, the Dickinson area. Um, yeah, I mean, that's...
That light pole, is that right there on the bank?
Where you can see, yeah, you know, so...
You could drift off or...
Yeah, and just hit it. And, you know, and I'm sure nobody knows, but those karts do 50, 60 miles an hour. So...
For the five-year, five-year-olds?
No, I mean, for the adults.
Okay.
I mean, the, the kids are, the kids are still probably 30 and 40. I mean, they're, they're, they're meant to, to race. So they're, they go fast enough to where if you'd hit one, it's not going to be a good situation and...
Can't you bank it up, bank the curve?
I mean, we, we could do a million things, but the best bet is to move the light poles because e- even if you say we'd fence that whole back area, I mean, then we'd have more into fencing right now, just with lumber and everything else.
Have you guys put together a plan, cost type, uh, proposal?
We've gotten, we've gotten quotes to move the poles and all that stuff. We're probably looking at 20,000 is what the initial quote is. Lisa's got some other stuff.
Yep, we, excuse me. We looked at some safety, other options, um, padding, different things. And there is just, there really isn't anything that's going to eliminate it from causing an accident, um, for the youth or, or the adults. Um, I did have, um, Electric Sales came out and just did a quote on what they would have to do to move it. Um, and it's, it's a lot of work and, and it's roughly $18,000 to move it. Um, that 10 to 15.
It's just for one pole?
Two poles.
Two poles.
Yes.
So about 9,000 apiece?
Yes.
Yeah, if you look at it, and I guess I don't know all the pictures, overnight, one picture a ways away.
Yeah.
And then there's another one that's a little bit close up. That's two separate poles.
Yeah, yep.
So when they designed the track, why didn't they take that into effect?
When we built the track, the plan was, and there's a, the last two pictures are pictures of the current area where we did the two mud runs. That same area we'd like to see, um, we will flatten out to do tractor-truck poles. You can roughly have a 350-foot area for tractor-truck poles. So we need to fit as much stuff into that small area as we can. So if we would move that track out, say to the north further, there'd just be no room. We couldn't even have the monster truck show then. There just, there wouldn't have been room for that. So that, that area there is flat enough to where you can build multiple different things.
The, they designed it...
When I went out there, I laid it out for them. I said, "This is the way we wanted to do it because we plan on using that area for other events." I mean, otherwise it's just, it's wasted space. I mean...
The poles were out there already?
The poles were already pre-existing, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So when you move the poles, are you going to move them out so you could do mud runs at night? Are they going to be moved past that pit?
The, no, that's on the opposite side.
Okay.
So the, the mud run stuff is to the north. The, uh, poles are on the south side.
Okay.
So it, what, what we were talking about is if we take and physically move the track to the north, it basically eliminate that whole area.
Right.
So then there'd be, we couldn't do monster trucks. We couldn't do mud runs. We couldn't do tractor-truck poles.
And where are you going to put the 350-foot?
Right where the, so the mud, the, the mud run area, I literally, Al, they've had their blade out there all summer long. I mean, that's been phenomenal. We basically take that area where we did the mud runs and we just fill it back in. It, it's literally a day's worth of work for, for building them.
Yeah.
It wasn't bad.
Yeah.
The street light that got hit in the monster truck thing, is that one that you need to move or not?
No. Were you there and saw that?
Yeah, I saw that.
So it, the, the tough truck deal like we did with that, I mean, the people loved it. I mean, we just, the last one we had, we did the mud runs, say like a, a beater car where people take a $500 car and just eliminate everything. And then the tough trucks. The, the winter race that we're talking about doing will be just a random piece of junk car that people go downtown and get and they, they race them against each other. There was 26 of them at our, our event.
That was pretty entertaining, that part.
Yeah. So it, we want to do more things like that. I mean, truthfully, the Speedway is phenomenal, but it doesn't make any money. The events, the, the specialty events like that is where we're going to do, do better for the long run.
So, uh, are you here today asking for, um, authorization to move forward with moving these lights? Is that...
It, kind of. So the other thing is, is that, that facility in the last, God, I've been here in Dickinson, I think, 11 years now, 10 years, has not had like a lot of updates and upgrades. You know, this year we took, like, we cleaned the facility head to toe. I mean, we removed all the upright tanks out there that looked crappy. We put frac tanks in, made it all look nice. We would like the, the county to come in now and, and do some upgrades to the facility as well. So I, I think we need to have some...
We just spent how much money on, on fence and, and buying property out there?
I know. I, yes, to the north there.
So I mean, we are...
For sure. I'm just saying like that, and it's not stuff that's going to like cost a fortune. There's just some things, you know, the rain runoff. Lisa's seen multiple pictures. It's, it's atrocious. It just, it comes down on the track. We've had to rent excavators to rip up the front stretch hours before an event and then lay it back in to try to get the water to drain. Like, there's just some things out there that need to be updated.
And, and yet, what that drainage issue you've been talking about has been looked at and looked at and looked at over the years. And I don't know that there's ever been a, uh, there's been many attempts to, to fix it.
I ha- I had Midwest Erosion Control come out. I know the guy that owns the place, um, just to say, "Hey, in your opinion, what can we do there?" And he is putting together some type of action plan to see what we can do to, to try to help out.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the one picture there, you can see literally water where people stand because when it rains, it literally goes down there and then just sits there. I mean...
Well, I think we should deal with the, the light question
Right.
that, that you're here for.
Yes.
And, uh, so if you're looking for permission, are you looking, uh, for, uh, funding for the, that point too?
Yes. Yeah, I...
Okay, so, um, I'd make a motion to, um, and, and my biggest concern, looking at those photographs, that those, that's a, that's a bad accident waiting to happen.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
And, uh, $18,000 to, uh, prevent one serious accident for a younger person or anybody
Right.
in my mind is, is money well spent. So...
We've literally only had practice days because I don't want people to truly be racing and then something to happen. So...
And so my motion is to, um, authorize, uh, the, uh, moving, if that's the right word, relocating two traffic, uh, two light standards poles.
Yes, yep.
And allowing eight, $18,000 as, um, cost to do so.
Do you, is that 18,000 a hard number?
No, it's, it's approximate. He said it, that's his estimate, but depending on when they get in there, if they're, cause they are older lights from 2004, they may have to do some difference.
I'll amend my, uh, my motion to, uh, bump that 18 to 20.
Okay.
Up to, up to 20.
And if it's different, I will come back and, and
Yeah.
get an estimate on, to you for authorization above that.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to spend up to $20,000 to move the two light poles at the racetrack. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion?
Just funds, funds coming from the Park Board or where is it?
Yeah. I, I, I just assumed that, I guess, but we, we have the money to do it, yeah. Carla?
That's what I was going to ask, the budget part of it all. Where is it coming from?
Okay.
And will that, is that going to affect the budget of the Park Board at, at all, Ms. Heiser?
No.
Okay.
And, and do you have to do any other work with the track then after that?
No, nope. I mean, we, we've basically, the, the track is there and it's, it's ready to go. I mean, we, we've had test days where just the community came out. We didn't charge them anything. They just came out, they brought all their stuff with and just kind of more Just kinda more had fun days so that they could see the place and how it's going to be. So on, once the two light poles are moved. There'll be some final grading and stuff, but that, that's all, that'll all be done by us. So we can handle all the, the dirt working side of stuff.
And I appreciate you wanting to move them, even on a little motor thirty miles an hour with a little scooter.
I, I mean, truthfully, it's affected us quite a bit because, say, those ten, twelve races we would have done this summer, I mean. They're worth four thousand, five thousand dollars apiece. I mean, it affected our bottom line, but I'm not gonna kill somebody, so.
Okay, uh, any further discussion?
You know, Randy, I've been out there, been out the county since they built that track and that, that issue of that washing's been there for, we've tried everything. I looked at it the other day. I think we need to put like a, a drain and kick maybe some of that water into that holding pond. You know, we've, it always washed in Jeff Coon's field. This year we eliminated it. We kept it on the side, so. I think the only way you're gonna really fix that is either number one, you're gonna put an asphalt runway for the water to run or, or concrete. But I think there should be a system put in so we can kick maybe that water inside a holding pond, so when they have races, they can use that water, but. Yes, there's, it's, it, it'll cut two feet deep in a big rain. Some kind of an inlet of some sort, so I, I've been trying to figure out what we put riprap in. It just cuts it right out and it's just, it's violent when it comes off that hill.
We, uh, we actually had a car.
We're a little bit off track here. This is, yeah, we need to call for the question. You're entirely correct. Okay, we have a motion and a second to appropriate twenty thousand dollars, move the, the two light poles. Roll call vote, Ken. Bernie. Dean. Motion carried. I vote aye. Chair votes aye.
I guess if you got any other questions, we'd be.
Is there any future out there for RC, remote control cars and stuff?
Um, if we do. Yes, so the plan was if we do that indoor building at some point in time, um, the whole summer months. That building would be built for a BMX track, RC cars, um. Kinda do a bunch of different stuff in the summer months when it wouldn't be utilized for, say, the winter motocross, winter karts. You know, all that kinda thing, so.
Until the building is built, is there any plans to possibly do an o- outdoor area?
Definitely is. We have that current ten acres to the north now. Um, if the building isn't gonna be built in the next few years. Um, we've talked about trying to do something to utilize that space until that happens.
Few people that came and asked about that.
So.
I said, bring it up when we've met with you.
Yep, I mean, definitely. We've, I mean, we'd love to see that, so.
So I have a question. And this is, this is me just brainstorming. Would snow machines work or ice ma- snow machines like they use on ski slopes work to snow your track for snowmobile races?
We actually, uh, last winter, we looked into it pretty big because just, you know, say we took over in January, we wanted to start. Doing some different events, um, snow machines are super expensive.
Well, that's, that's.
I mean. Yeah, so we, we would actually like to do that. You know, Deadwood does a snow cross race every winter and there's well over two thousand. Twenty-five hundred people that go to that. We would like to do something like that at some point in time, but. I mean, a snow machine is.
What, 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 when you say really expensive, what are you talking?
I mean, they're twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars each.
And how many would it take to do a track? Four?
Yeah.
Can you rent them?
Um, there is some type of rental program, but there, none of them are anywhere near here, so there'd be a lot of shipping costs and different stuff with it, so.
You said twenty to thirty thousand and you'd need four?
Yes, um, I actually reached out to a couple of the, the ski resorts down in Rapid City to see if they had any old used ones. That we could purchase for relatively inexpensive, go through them, you know, kinda get them back up and running and. They don't like to do anything like that, so.
They don't wear out?
Well, they wear out. They just, they're expensive, so they wanna, they do the same thing that I was trying to, trying to find out, so. But yes, we, we wanna do some type of events in the winter months. I mean. It, it, it'd be good to utilize that facility, even, even flooding the track with water and doing actual ice racing with. Snowmobiles and four-wheelers and dirt bikes. We've thought about doing that as well.
Because it, it's, we have the temperatures, we just don't have reliable snow.
Yes.
Well, then you're gonna have to look at a snow making machine.
We looked at them hard last winter a lot, so. Okay, that's all.
Anything else for Brad? Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item of business is the Fairgrounds and Events Park Master Plan and a shooting range?
Um, so just as we were talking about the master plan and the shooting range, um. That we were talking about on the north side of that, um, facility. Um, I have spoken to Mayor Decker eh, about their gun range and their regional training facility that they're doing. And so, um, just getting it, getting into some of the specifics on how they're going to use that facility and what they're going to do and what they're building, really. Cause I have not seen a plan, um, and just trying to talk to, about not wanting to do the same thing. In two different places and how we could maybe merge and do some of those things, so. Just wanted to give you a little heads up that we are into some talks about that. Um, one requirement that I would specifically. Like this board to have is that there would be public facility use of that, um, of their facility. They would man it. We wouldn't have to do any of that, um, but very interested in what they're doing and, and maybe seeing if we could partner. With our city on providing that for the county, so. Um, just wanted to give you a heads up on that one, just because, like I said, we don't wanna do it twice. They've hired a consultant now. To do a feasibility study and they will share that with me, and then, um, I will share it with you, obviously, if you have not seen it. And then, um, we'll just see how things shake out in the long run and then we'll start into some more specifics at that point.
Is this, uh, committee that we formed? On the pistol range, firing range, gun range?
We met, and, um, they just did describe their whole facility and my, I mean, it's a beautiful facility. My. Main concern that I kept bringing up was public accessibility and, I mean, it was discussed.
I thought I was on that committee too, Bernie.
Yeah, I didn't remember that, but. I apologize.
No, that's, that's fine.
I was Sheriff Lee, myself, Mayor Decker, um, Police Chief, City Administrator. Fire Chief and three.
I distinctly remember asking to be on that committee.
I apologize.
No, that's all right. It seems to be happening more and more lately. And, and I'm not picking on.
A- anyway, it's, um, I guess I'd like to see what they come up on their feasibility study and just see how much. Public accessibility there will be, because when I asked about public time, it was. It, it seemed, you know, it didn't seem like we're gonna get the time that we probably needed as far as using public money.
I absolutely agree with you. If it, if, I won't support anything that. Doesn't provide adequate, uh, usage by the general public.
And that was one of my discussions with Mayor Decker also was, you know, with our combination potentially. That could give them the ability to have more lanes and have more access to the public more often.
Is it gonna be indoor?
Yes, it will be an indoor facility.
A rifle as well?
That I don't know.
What?
Rifle.
Like hundred yard?
I couldn't tell, yes.
That, I, I've, I've visited some of those, Jason, and, uh. They, they can be done. Once you open it up to high-powered rifles, it gets a little more spendy. Again, typically those, uh, rifle ranges have, are a hundred yard.
Right.
Range, and so there's that additional cost, not, I'm not saying it can't be done. That's, that's part of the, what I would s- see as part of the whole planning process.
Got you.
Anything else? Thank you, Lisa.
All right, thank you.
I guess that brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other thing that should be brought before us today? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Other entity requests for, list for the two thousand twenty-two budget? You have some comment or that to the deputy auditor?
Yeah, um, when you approved the budget last meeting, the twenty twenty-two funding other entity requests, no action was taken on those. We have had some of these entities calling and asking, you know, are they approved? Are they not approved because they're working on their budgets? So I guess we're looking for some actions if you're gonna approve, not approve them. Um, this morning I got from Karen that there's one million forty-four thousand left. In the twenty twenty-one ARPA funds, so that's what you have left to work with if you're gonna fund these out of ARPA. And also next year, just for your information, we are expecting. Another three million and some change in ARPA funds. That'll come sometime next summer. We don't have a date yet.
On some of these, I believe that we had made yearly dollar amounts to these.
Yes, the community action and best friends mentoring are something that you do every year, the fifteen thousand and the ten thousand, so. Those are every year annual.
And the Southwest Correction Body Scanner, was that, was that not approved?
No, no.
And elder care.
That wasn't, I don't think that was approved, but I think that's one that we need to approve, correct, that it didn't get put on, levied, but. We were supposed to, that you may need to approve that one because it didn't get levied for.
They, they made a presentation.
Yes, they did.
Right, but it, to my, to my knowledge, I think we didn't levy for that and so we need to approve that one.
Why didn't we levy for that one? Cause we give to the elder care every year.
I think it just got missed.
Yeah, it's, you're, you're right, Commissioner.
No, I think what happened was.
Every year.
No, I think what happened was, uh, towards the end of the budgeting process. We kinda went in and said which of requests from some of these, uh, special groups could be funded through. ARPA versus funded through the, uh, general budget. And so that's why if you, if you go through your sheets, the, the, you had the budget sheet, then on the bottom, uh, there was a connotation. I don't have it right in front of me, which basically spelled out which, uh, expenses could be, uh, funneled through ARPA. But I just wanna point a clarification, so at this point in the budget, we haven't approved any funds for community action?
No.
Okay, and we haven't, uh, approved any funds for the, uh, best friends mentoring program?
Correct.
And all of that should have been in the October fifteenth budget to approve.
Uh, no, they were, well, they were listed on this twenty twenty-two funding other entity requests and we didn't act on this one.
That's where it made me nervous that we gave some mills back because ARPA funds aren't gonna come forever. And we're gonna get in trouble with the budget in years to come.
They'll raise taxes again.
Then we'll just have to, yep.
Well, elder, elder care is a requirement through, um. Century code, so. That funding is always in place. So how do we straighten this out today? Or can we?
I think you just need to make motions on which ones you're gonna approve, which ones you're not gonna approve so that these entities know. Where they're going with their budgets.
There's some pretty. I mean, I would definitely, there's three on here I see, but there's other ones that we're gonna have to look into. We can't approve all of these today. I would make a motion that we approve community action that we give every year in the amount of fifteen thousand. Best friends mentoring that we give every year for ten and elder care additional mills covered for fifty-four thousand.
I'll second that if you don't have.
Well, I'm just, the body scanner for Correctional Center is, uh, one of those.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Safety issues again and.
I will add on Southwest, the Southwest Correction Body Scanner, is that for, just, is that up for in the jail?
Yeah.
Okay, then, no, I won't approve that. We'll have to have a, I mean, that's, that's something they should come forward with. Does that include anything on their? Hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar ad, ask, or their one million ask?
Uh, it, it's a standalone request.
As of now, my motion is the community action, the best friends and the elder care.
The motion, and Commissioner Messer, you second that?
I did.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm not against any of the other ones. I just wanna make that clear. I'm just, those are the three I know we give every year.
Okay, do a roll call vote then. Commissioner Arzad.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Those three, three identities are approved. Any other ones that we wanted to do?
Well, I know we talked the adult changing station for, um, Abel, and I think there's consensus to support that. And I, I, but I'd be honest with you, I don't remember the reason it was, uh, delayed, so.
I think it was moved over. We're gonna take it out of these ARPA funds instead of, out of a general budget.
So I would move that the one hundred eighty-two fifty request for the adult changing station at Abel be, uh, approved. And funded through the twenty twenty-one ARPA funds.
The motion to prove the adult changing set for Abel, do I have a second?
I'll second with discussion.
Have a second. Go ahead with the discussion.
Did we have an actual invoice or did they give us the actual amount?
They, they came forward with it and then they got a, they're actually in their, I don't know, with a preliminary one and when they came to the actual one, it was actually doubled on them almost. Fun, remember she came back and said that the month, it was quite a bit more than they had planned even.
Okay.
Was that the total cost of that project or?
The bathroom part of it, it was a bathroom part of it that ended up being almost double because they were talking about only doing one instead of two now, because there was a cost of it.
But. My question is, is that one eighty just for this specific adult changing station?
Yes.
It is.
Right.
All right, so we're not building.
Cause, cause they have other things on the bottom. There's three others lower. Their table is asking for two. There's a. Energy, energy improvements in this concrete and, uh, canopy and then there's some flooring that they're. and then there's some flooring that they were also asking for.
I guess I would like to contact them on that and see if they've got any funding from the city or any other grant funding first.
And, and when it, yeah, I, I know that they are heavily into federal grants and things like that, and so, you know, because those are, you know, non-essential building improvements they want to make. The, the changing station I can agree to because that is a specific need. And, but improvements to the building and, you know, flooring and energy improvements, energy improvements, I'm sure they can go to somebody and get a huge grant for that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do you have a motion then for approving the Abel's adult changing station for 188,250?
Excuse me. And this is our, the ARPA funds again?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call vote then. Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carry. Anything else on this list that we want to look at? Excuse me.
Specifically for the 180.
Can some, Chairman Franch, can someone remind me on the body scanner, was there a grant that was coming in for that also? I know there was talk on that.
There was just the three requests for the body scanner, then for their treatment program, and then for the medical and correction officer wages, they just sent a letter on that.
So they didn't give us any other information or anything?
No, that's the letter that was in due, the information.
Okay, thank you.
I kind of think we've dealt with four that are probably the budgetary items of these other agencies, and the other ones we can deal with once we get more information. Because at the bottom of this list, it's going to be a whole nother list. I've got four or five other ones that are already on there, so I, I just want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to voice their request, rather than let's throw out and spend any money with.
I agree.
Then we don't have a fallback, so.
Okay. There's no other ones, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda then. And that's for the Commission District Redistricting Board. Karen's not available, I believe, so Amanda, do you have any comment on that, or you want me to? Amanda, are you on the phone?
Hey, sorry, I'm kind of having some problems hearing you. Um, I heard you have a comment on that, but I didn't hear what you asked me to comment.
We're talking about the redistricting board, I guess if you want to make comment on that, or you want me to handle that?
Oh, no, I think the statute is, is pretty clear who sits on it. It does have to, the commission will appoint a citizen at large that announcement went out, I think, a couple of days ago. For anyone that's interested to sit on that redistricting board, to send in an email or a letter of interest, what we're looking for is to find, I think, in that. In the notice that went out to the resident address, if you've had any previous redistricting, if you've sat on a redistricting board previously and why you're interested, and I guess that's about it.
Okay, yeah, because part of that board is the chairman of the, of the county commission, and the state's attorneys on that, then there'd be a citizen from the largest community, which would be Dickinson. And then the one, the one Amanda's talking about here is, is there, we don't have any township, so then that we put out a notice that anybody wants to apply for that, they have till November 15th at 5:00 PM to get their application in for that position, and that'll be appointed by a county commissioner, and we're having a special meeting for the county commissioner on November 19, 2021, at nine o'clock, and then the commissioner will point that person that, from those applicants. And then the.
And then immediately following that, the small cities, whoever they pick to represent, a board member to represent them will also convene, I believe, at that same time, right before, right after the county commission, and they, they appoint a citizen at large to sit on the redistricting board as well.
Right, and then our board will be set up, then we'll have meat for the redistricting.
So small cities are, what, Richerton, Gladstone, Southheart, Bellfield, Taylor?
Taylor, yep, five cities, yep.
Can't, can't we just appoint, say, the mayor from each one of those communities?
They only, they only has one, they only get one out of all five cities.
One out of all five of them?
Five, so they have to point, so that's what up to them to pick it.
We should let them decide who they want to appoint.
They are, they are. They decide, the one we're going to pick is, is the one for the, replace the township supervisor that we don't have. Okay, so we'll have a special meeting then on.
Statute's very clear about how we have to appoint some members or who sits on it. So the county commission, because we don't have incorporated township, picks one individual at large, one citizen at large, and then the representatives of the small cities pick one citizen at large, and then the city commission will pick an individual to sit on it as well.
Okay, so then we want to make sure you're here then for November 19th for our special meeting to pick a person to be on that redistricting board. And then we have to have this all decided by the end of the year or two.
Special meeting 31 already, huh?
I would ask Chairman, I, I didn't put it on the ratified, but I know there's just maybe one or two that would like to come up and speak. If you would let them, please.
Okay, we have to get finished. Anybody else, any questions on the redistricting? If not, then we'll look for that meeting then to be here on November 19th, and at nine o'clock for that. And then the redistricting, the cities will be, small cities will meet right after that to pick their appoint, or their appointee. Okay, anything else then? You said you had someone that I wanted to speak with, something, or?
My name is Dean Burwick, South Star County resident. At the, I believe it was the last zoning and the Star County zoning meeting, Amanda said that we could be to put together a committee and find somebody to check on the CUPs, a professional or an expert, to check on the CUPs out at the Marathon refinery. And so I called Amanda on this, and I said, hey, Amanda, are you really going to, you're going to pay for this? And, because she said that they would at that meeting. And she said, you guys could either decide, or we could put together a committee to decide on getting this professional person to go out there and find out, you know, how the plant got as big as it did, all this stuff, the concrete work, everything, you know, the changing of the fuels, all this stuff.
I sent that opinion out. What I had said was, I wasn't sure what was exactly what was being refined out there, and that if the commission wanted to vote, to hire someone to make sure what was going on out, to see what was being refined out there, they certainly could. As far as the rest of the conditional use permit, I, I've written my opinion on that. The only thing that I had any concerns about was, I've seen that they have evolved throughout the years, and I don't know exactly what is being refined out there. There was some information that was given to me in the last couple of weeks that I think came from, I'd have to look back at my email. It came from emergency management, but it essentially showed quite a bit of what they are storing out there. That was sent to the commissioners as well, so I, as far as the conditional use permit, the only, the only thing that I saw that could potentially be an issue was what exact, that I don't know about is what exactly is being refined out there.
Well, yeah, but I mean, that's part of getting this professional or expert to go out there and find out what is going on out there. And if, if, if the commission doesn't want to do it, I mean, if, if the people have to do it, we're going to do it, but we're going to, if, if we find out that there's issues which, hey, the place grew to twice the size, noisier than it's ever been, all this stuff, with nothing as far as, I don't know where you got the CUPs that says that they can do this, or that, you know, or permits without the public knowing about it. Hey, we got to find out if that's correct or not. And if you guys don't want to put together a committee or hire somebody to do this, then we're going to do it, and if we find stuff that's definitely, you know, out of the parameters, then we're going to basically end up suing the county. And that's what's going to happen. So, I mean, the way you said it, Amanda, the first time, it sounded like this stuff was all going to get checked out. Well, still, nothing's been really checked out. And nothing has been done.
I guess I, I looked at, I looked at what the state, or what the, what Star County deals with. We just deal with the conditional use permit. And from what I can see, other than, I think they're in compliance, other than I'm not totally positive of what is all being refined out there, so that was one question that I had, which might have been answered. As far as things like emissions, sound control, things like that, the emissions are through, you know, probably like the Department of Health and things like that, which we wouldn't have any control over. We, we simply issued that conditional use permit, and from what I can see, like I said, other than, I'm not sure because of the refining, that what they've refined out there has evolved through the years, I didn't see anything that they wouldn't be in compliance with. If it's, if it's building permits, that's, again, not going to be under the conditional use permit, that's going to be under something, you know.
That, that's what I'm saying. We need to, we need to find out what they should have been under, because this whole thing has changed from when it was Bakken oil. And nobody seems to care about this, and it needs to be changed, fire department, all this stuff. And, and they say they have a fire department, there is no way they have a fire department that control the stuff they got out there. And that, that should be your concern, your guys' concern. Now, and, you know, it is the people's, but I mean, we're thinking that you guys are sitting here, that's what your jobs are, is to make sure we're safe. Nobody knows nothing, and that's, Amanda, I've been talking about this for three to four months already, and nothing has gotten done. I mean, I, I can call the state, just like you can, and I have called the state, and I've, I've, I've called the different divisions that do monitor this stuff, and they said, hey, yeah, they're sending in their emissions, and that so far it's been under, you know, the, you know, in the parameters it's supposed to be. What I'm saying is all this other stuff that has been done out there, and I don't believe they could have done all this stuff, built this monster with the, the CUP they had, or the, or the permit they had. And I think we need to hire somebody professionally who knows.
It allowed them to, to build a refinery.
We understand that, Amanda.
And things like that, that'll be under, like, building permits.
But Ms. Ingelsted, we don't have, it was at the, it was either at the July public hearing, planning and zoning, July or August, and it was stated at the meeting, we can listen to the minutes, that you weren't an expert, but you looked through the CUP, and what you recommended.
Yep.
Is we get an expert to look into the CUP to make sure every, all the residents and that refinery and the CUP is up to date. And that was the recommendation made.
I, I can resend out the letter. What I said was that I wasn't an expert, I wasn't a petroleum engineer. What I was concerned about was that the, what has been refined out there has evolved, because we know that they're doing feedstocks or soybeans, and it was originally under the hydrocarbon, and my, what I said, and I can certainly send that letter out again, was if the commission felt that they were not in, if, if, you know, if they were refining something that wasn't under that conditional use permit, they could hire an expert to find out what is being refined out there and make sure that it fits under either the conditional use permit, or, quite frankly, a, a planning and zoning code that would have been grandfathered in, which is like, you have, I have to take a look at it. If it's in my letter, I would be happy to resend it out. It was, it was very, it was very definite in what the letter said and, and what I had expressed.
I mean, I don't want to spend a ton of the taxpayers' money, but I feel as a commission, that is our responsibility to make sure that this CUP is up to date, that they were following everything. I'm not against the refinery, but I think that we owe that to the residents as we watch every, we make everybody else follow building permits, CUPs, everything.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, so there's concern from the local residents about the operation of the plant. Okay, when the plant was permitted.
And building of the plant, and.
Okay, let me finish. By WPI, it was zoned industrial with conditional use permit for hydrocarbons, whichever one it is. Conditional use permit number, I can't find, I had it over here before. My point is if the use has changed, tell me which use they need to go to under the permitted uses, that they would actually have to come in and apply for. Okay? If there's not a, a vehicle in there under conditional uses, or special, special uses or permitted uses, then it's really kind of on us as well to modify it and update our plan, because our ordinance hasn't been updated since 2012. So, so that's there. And so if, if we're concerned about that, then that's where we need to go. Okay, which conditional use should they be operating on if it's not the one that they're currently operating on? And then regards the investigations and, and do research on it, I mean, the, the state's very restrictive on, and we're not the experts, and I agree with that, but I also don't think that we as the county should go out and hire an expert every time some group or some lodge, lodge complaint. Are we doing an investigation of the gas plant over South Bellfield, or are we going to do an investigation over on, on Red Trail? Let's push hard to the state of North Dakota through the Department of Health, their air quality permits, if, if that's one of the concerns. What they're storing onsite, which is an emergency provision as you state, let's push them to get the answers, but for us to go and independently fund investigative reports on every time that a complaint is filed, I, I, I think that's, you know, I, I think that's not where we want to go, because we could take it to all levels, a whole bunch of different facilities and all those kinds of things, so. I, I hope you can appreciate that.
I, I do appreciate it, but just like you said, the whole, the whole, one of the big deals is 2012, nothing's been, nothing been done.
Right.
You know, it's crazy that you, everybody's just sitting here and letting this thing grow like it has. And, and I mean, it is grown, it, everybody knows it out there, and the noise, and all the lights, all the, everything, but nobody seems to know nothing. You know, oh, it might, it might follow, or I thought, I thought, don't get it anymore.
There's been.
Lots of facts of how this thing kept on moving on without people's permission, or CUPs permits, whatever. Our knowledge.
I understand a CUP is different than these building permits.
Yes, I, I.
And that's different, but with these, there's six inspections only since.
On the building perspective.
On the building side.
Because I found it's under number.
Yes.
Four oil refineries, petrochemical plants are.
But it's tripled in size with six permits.
Okay.
Just a question on, who has ultimate authority over refineries? What is the industrial, state industrial commission's authority here?
Well, it falls on the Public Service Commission and the Star County Commissioners and the, the Planning and Zoning Board.
You know, talking about the building of the refinery, we had a public hearing on that, there wasn't, not a single resident opposed to that.
But, but at that point.
I, I know, but you made a comment about all the lights and stuff.
I mean, I don't read the paper. I, you know, if my wife wouldn't have caught this deal about Marathon putting the turbines up out of the Bismarck Tribune, there, how am I supposed to, I don't read the Bismarck Tribune, I never read the Bismarck Tribune. But that's where they advertise this, so you're asking me why these people, I guarantee you, if we would have known this, this room would have been full. It would have been full, but we don't have, not everybody's sitting around waiting to find out if somebody's going to issue something, put it in the paper a couple of times. Give us a notice out there, when, when we're done with the, the setbacks and all the stuff we're doing, people are going to get notified when stuff like this goes on, not just if they're 200 feet away, because there's nobody there but a duck. You know, so.
I'm not arguing your position, I'm just stating a fact that when, when the public hearing on the original construction of the refinery, not the, not the Marathon updates and that, back when.
When Hovin and everybody was pushing it.
Nobody showed up to oppose it.
But, but I, I didn't follow it back then, but wasn't it set there to produce diesel that we could go and purchase if you had a bulk? You know, and I don't think that's, that's not there anymore. Nothing. We would have, as a community, supported it because that was. We would have, as a community, supported it because that was what it was supposed to be. Well, I don't, I believe that's what it is anymore.
Anymore, you're right. I, I don't, I'm, listen, I'm not arguing with you guys.
But notices are a big thing, too, as far as like, hey, this is what's gonna happen here. I had no idea that plant was ever going in there. I did. You know, I was working. I, I just didn't see it. I don't read the paper. If my wife wouldn't, like I said, she wouldn't have caught the turbine thing, I would, this thing would have, we, we would have never got after it like we did. You know? And, and that's just unethical on Marathon's part. And they have been unethical from the start, and I hope all you guys realize this. But anyway, if, you know, we, we need to get an expert looking at, at, at these permits and stuff and seeing what was done. And if you guys ain't gonna do it, then we are.
And I apologize for us not updating the planning and zoning since 2012. I apologize, because that, that's very, that's, that's 10 years. That's very wrong.
That's very wrong.
That did not happen in the county.
Yeah, they talk, you know, talk about health and stuff, let's, it's a big one. And it's a big one for the, the people that have got to go out there, the, the first responders and stuff. It's big for all them, and they don't know nothing. Thank you.
I would just like to state that the setbacks that that committee did, it was all laypeople that got on that committee but a few planning and zoning members.
Yeah.
There wasn't anybody, any employee from the county, but it was all the late, and they've done a wonderful job, and that is, that is done where we thought it would take years.
When we did this, we looked at all the other counties and, uh, and we compromised on a lot of stuff. It's gonna be good when you get it.
November 16th, it'll be, we'll have the done copy and have it all to the commissioners.
Thank you very much for your time.
My name's Dale Burwick. Same issue, I guess. Like to just make a couple comments. Mine, it's the noise. I listen to a noise out there 70% of the week. It drives me insane, and there's nothing I've been able to do with Marathon, one-on-one or anything else, to get them to, to do anything about it. I probably hear it worse than most people. I don't know why. I think it's an elevation thing. I've contacted everybody I can out there numerous times. We're working on it, we got engineers on it, we got filters ordered. It doesn't change. A train went by the other day, freight train on the tracks between them and me. I could hear the plant over the damn train. Something's gotta be done with this place. You say the original plant, nobody showed up, nobody, you know, came to the meetings or anything. That original plant was for western North Dakota, supplying diesel to the oil rigs, to the locals, to the farmers. That's what it was sold on. And I never had an issue with anything they did down there when that thing was producing diesel fuel. When it started producing soybeans, that's when all the noise came in. That's when the massive flares happened. That's delighting. I don't know what these people are looking at, but it's insane. There's serious issues down there, people. They need to be addressed. Thank you.
I think something does, because I agree with them. We just push it. We listen to the residents and we don't do anything. We push it to the next meeting. We push it to the next planning and zoning meeting. We listen to them and we push it. It's either pushed or tabled, and nothing is done for the residents. And I know building permits is different than the CUP. First meeting I went to, they promised they had mufflers on order, they promised they were gonna go then put the lights down, they were gonna dim them at night. That's another thing, promised and pushed. So I think we do need to make some kind of decision. We do need to get some kind of expert looking into that CUP. I understand Commissioner Messer, we can't do that all the time, but this is an issue for people that live out there.
I understand that. And what I'm saying is, every facility that you potentially approve, you know, no matter where it is, what it is, is a potential issue for, for people. And, um, I'm just, I, I don't want to get in the practice of us being the contractor of enforcement, because we're not experts.
That's right, and I want, and we're, but I'm on planning and zoning.
But that's why this, the, uh, other regulatory, EPA, Health Department, all these, uh, agencies are created so that we, we don't have to do those things, because that's an unfair burden to us. Because if, if you do it for one, somebody's gonna come in, you know, we, we, we had the, the study where, um, KLJ did it, was a review of, excuse me, of their proposal, and we were willing to spend it. And I'm going, in my industry, we, the, any compliance reviews are always paid by the applicant. So Marathon had to do that. So I'm just saying, there's agencies in place, it does not have to be, uh, us to expend that, because you'll open the checkbook and it's gonna be a lot, um...
The county picks it, and the county, the county picks the who needs to review it. I don't think we let Marathon or anybody else, I'm not just taking them, but it's pretty easy for a company to pick their own people to review something. The county should pick it, the company pays it.
I mean, it's straight so far from what its original intent was. And how did that happen?
Yeah.
Go, Bernie. Yes.
I mean, there, I understand CUPs get grandfathered in. I understand that. But I don't, so is everybody else in Stark County that has a CUP, just can keep doing what they want with that CUP and come in and said, oh, I thought we were grandfathered in, that's why we built this, this, and this, and this.
I go back to what CUP should they be operating under.
They'd have to get shut down. If that's, if that's, if that's what you feel, Neil, I mean, they would have to, they cannot take a whole different fuel, changes, well, change everything, change the whole plant. We're saying, we're telling you that.
You don't have to tell me that. I drive by the facility all the time. I follow...
You don't sit there and listen to it. You don't have to live with it, Neil, Commissioner Messer. You don't live with it. We do. And it isn't the same fuel. How did they get by with this? And I did talk to the Industrial Commission, I've talked to every state agency, I got it written down.
You wanna step up to the mic?
Dean Burwick, um, I have called the Industrial Commission, I've called the water, I've called this, the air.
What response did you get?
All they do is give you the numbers, but nobody knows, like even the Industrial Commission, all we do is what permit we have. They don't find out if it's correct or not. This is the permit we're going under. And I asked them, I said, well, what if they're, what if they modified something and, and, uh, and nobody knows about it and stuff? Well, that's not our, that's not for us to check out. So, nobody's checking it out. And I asked Steve Josephson, you know, hey, you know, what, what have you checked out? He hasn't even been there. Well, you know, so I mean, hey, he don't have to, and, and, and hey, I understand he don't have to go there himself. He's got plenty of people he can delegate this stuff to, or, or hire somebody to go do it. But it should have been done, and it hasn't been done in 13 years.
Well, have you talked to compliance officers out there? Have you met with them? Have you talked...
I'm not, I'm not gonna go wa, talk to the rabbit who's watching the carrot patch. I'm not gonna do that, and that's why I don't want their...
It's gonna give you information. You, you, uh, asked for information from one of the state agencies. I can't remember which one.
I've asked all of them.
And they, one of them sent out information and said, this was the latest emission report or something to that effect. That was, uh, regard. So, I, I guess I, uh...
But that is getting taken by Marathon. I guess one of them, I, I, on the latest one I talked to, they sent somebody out to do, uh, the air study, and it, and it passed whatever they were passing it for. I don't even know what it is. I don't think anybody here knows what it is. I'm just saying, let's find out what's going on out there and find out if they are in compliance from day one. That's what I would like to know. Because this thing has turned into a monster. I mean, we're not making this stuff up. It's crazy what it went, like what it started out as, you didn't even know it was there. To today, you can't drive by Old Highway 10 without, hey, wow, look at that thing, look at that thing, look at that thing. Listen to that thing once.
Well, in one of those reports you filed, there was a, uh, that was sent over, there was a, um, decibel study, was there not?
Yeah. When, when can all the shit shut down?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. I've called...
I'm just saying, that's the information that was presented to, to me, and, no, I just, uh...
I was hiring an, 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 a firm, an engineering firm, to take studies on the sound. They told me, Dean, we got it, we'd have to be here 24 hours to catch this, you know, I mean, the loudest sound they got, because this thing isn't the same all the time. It changes constantly. I mean, hourly, it changes from where you can't hear it to where it's roaring. He said, Dean, we, we'd have to have somebody here all the time, you couldn't afford it. So he gave us the decimeters, and I said, again, now that Marathon's under trust my reading? I mean, come on. That's, that's like me trusting Marathon. I don't trust them at all.
When, um, you know, Dean is, was asked and said, well, did you go out to Marathon? Did you do this and that? Dean doesn't get paid by the Stark County. Dean does not get paid taxpayer dollars. That is not up to the residents to go to Marathon. We have somebody that gets taxpayer money through employee... They get, they get money. They get paid through his taxpayer dollars. That's up to us to make sure it's good for them. That is not up to them to make sure it's good for them.
And you were expecting to send Mr. Josephson out there?
No, no. Yeah, well, Josephson should be, he should be looking at this thing saying...
You're talking about Mr. Josephson. Mr. Josephson is not an expert in any one of the arenas that you're, that you're, uh, mentioning.
But the fuels have changed.
People who are. Get the Department of Health, get the EPA.
The reason I wanted Josephson is, he is the planner. He's supposed to, he, he, he would come after us, he'd come after every resident to try and resolve something, but he doesn't do anything out there. He could care less. That thing's a monster. I don't know how many times I gotta say it. And he doesn't do his job. I don't know how many times I gotta say that, and hey...
Let's get, let's get civil here, and all this.
Okay, okay.
So he does do his job. I've seen several reports he's looked through.
Oh, yeah, I heard that the other day. One of you guys asked him what he does. I mean, come on, man, it ain't only me. But hey, I'll leave him alone. You know, I'll probably get sued with this new thing he got going on. But anyway, um, I just want this thing checked out and find out how it got to be where it's at and if it was all done legally. That's all I've asked for three to four months, and nobody has come up with anything. I've done everything I can with the state, you guys do it. I'm tired of this stuff. I'm tired of doing research, 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 research. Get some professional who knows how a, 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 a refinery is built and get them on it. That's what should be done. And if you ain't gonna do it, then, then I will get it done. And it's gonna cost dearly.
Thank you. If I can't get this noise issue resolved, do I get to sue you guys? This plant is in your jurisdiction. Do I have to just sue Marathon? I mean, you guys had to approve something. The county commission had to approve something.
Your attorney would tell you to sue everybody in sight.
Probably so. I don't want to go there, I just want it resolved. Doing not have ordinances? When that hydrogen plant was built on east on the town, or whatever it is, over there in Cronk subdivision or industrial park, it didn't take them a week. In fact, they shut the plant down till they got the exhaust put on it. They shut it down. They didn't want this. You guys got ahead.
If you want to bring that, uh, uh, facility into thing, the, the, the noise violations was during testing, you're right, the, uh, they exceeded the 75 decibels during their testing period, but now during operations, it's, it's under the, the allowed uses of, uh...
They put a muffler on there, Neil.
It was, it was primarily during testing, because I was one of the ones who ended up, because we had property over in that area, so I got involved in that.
That's all fine and dandy, but the, where the residents were hearing it, now they don't.
If you lived near the, the refinery and it was that noisy, would you want it?
I'm saying, let's get the, uh, do your testing.
Do my testing.
Or whoever's, whoever's qualified to do the testing.
I pay your damn taxes. Do your job.
Do you have something?
Good morning, county commissioners. My, uh, blood level is pressures down, and my words are slower, so you have to bear with me when I want to say. Basically, uh, I've been concerned about our budget and, and all the expenditures that we have from the budget, and I know that we have to take care of our elderly, our children, handicapped children, and providing services to, like the House of Manna is very important. Biblically, when people do this, there's prosperity that comes their way. So, I, I want to introduce you an idea that, uh, South Dakota State, uh, brought in, uh, what I heard on the news, is that they, uh, brought two, uh, companies in that produce food. And I meant, last time I was here, I mentioned that we have to be in a place where it produce food. If we don't produce, especially food, then you enter into a series where, uh, you enter into poverty. Poverty is the inability to produce. So, if we bring in cor, not corporations, but small businesses who would like to expand, uh, we would be a vantage point to us. Uh, I have two copies, I want to distribute it, and, uh... To express this idea that I have, this is the first copy, and it talks about the history of wheat and how people have gone through hard times in a very, in a very practical way. So, if you understand that copy and what's going on, you'll have, you'll be, it will help us with, uh, adjusting our thinking to changing times. And that's the story, uh, the short story of history. Now, the second one, let me go back to, uh, South Dakota. They just brought this company in, and they're producing pasta. If you've been looking at the shelves, in, like Walmart, you'll see all the pasta where the spaghetti's at, and all the noodles, they're gone, wiped out. I think part of the problem is, is that, uh, farmers are holding on to their wheat right now, looking for a higher price, and during wheat, uh, one of the users, uh, bigger users of wheat, like for pasta, is, uh, they're consumed, and, uh, what I can read through what's going on in South Dakota is that companies are itching to move, especially if you're in California, and they're looking for other places to move. Now, if you're gonna move, first thing you have to do, know, is where you're gonna go. And I think North Dakota is a good place. I think Stark County is an excellent place to start a business. I think we have a high rate of businesses that started in Stark County do succeed, and we do have organizations like Fisher Sand Gravel and Steffis, who have, uh, because they, they found a unique people that could come together and make things happen. We have these people here. We don't, we don't have a lot of people, as far as I know, that are divided and, and carry a lot of different ideas in their heads. Basically, our roots come from working together. Our farmer industry, my folks, they're, his grandpa and grandpa, working together. So, as an introduction, I feel that, um, if we start moving in a direction of bringing producers in, uh, we can eliminate the middleman to bring prices down. Okay? Let's say, we're in a transition. In, in a transition, bad things can happen and good things can happen. One, one thing that can happen right now, we could have farmers who are holding on to their wheat, bring it into a mill, let's say, if somebody, we bring up a, a company here that knows how to mill and make, make bread, okay? Or pasta. They could, they could bring their wheat directly to this, uh, company that will mill it and then make produce out of it. We're eliminating the middleman. That's what we want to do. The reason why we want, hang on, the reason why we want to eliminate the middleman, I know there's inspections and things you gotta go through, is, uh, again, we're gonna be going through times that are changing, and we have to understand we're going through changing times. Let's keep, uh, our cost of living down, where, where things are affordable, instead Let's keep our cost of living down where, where things are affordable, instead of going with higher prices, higher food prices. So, hang on. And I, I brought this one, this is what they're doing. They're actually doing this in another state where they're making bread. If you're really, if you're really interested, there's a lot of ideas. I, I'm just, I'm here today, I saw this Saturday, and I thought, okay, well, that's really interesting. And then yesterday about four o'clock, I decided, well, okay, we need to talk about this at the County Commission because County Commission can advertise this, put an advertising in these trade magazines where it says, welcome to Stark County. This is what we're looking for. And to draw customers up. If, I believe that producers, I should say, producers are going to be very beneficial to our company because they're going to bring in income. That's what we want. We have a lot on this budget. People are, need money, okay? So you have to have income coming up. We also, we have to stabilize our standard of living. We don't want in this area to have a higher standard of living. And if we keep the, if we bring food into, we start manufacturing food, it will, it will prevent, what do you call that? When people grab food off the shelves, what do you call that, Bernie? When you, hoarding, okay, thank you, hoarding. And when hoarding takes place, you have, you automatically have shortages, and somebody else is lacking. But if we get to the place of manufacturing our own food, then have a distributing, there's a distributing mechanism already, some guy from New York has a truck that goes through Dickinson. It's called Farm to Table. And it comes to Dickinson and people that know when the day it's going to come here, and they get boxes of food for $25. Well, we could, we could do that with a lot of different, our products that we have to start. We could have lifelines set up where people are getting food. They don't have to go to the grocery store as much. It's actually eliminating, whether you know it or not, maybe, I, I haven't convinced you, but we are in shortages right now. And the whole San Joaquin Valley, they planted out there in the San Joaquin Valley, then they were told that they're going to be allotted water, and some didn't get water, so all them see that they planted was all buried again. And there was a lot of lost of food. If you think that doesn't affect us, it does affect us. So Bernie, you have a question?
I do. Do we have a state mill?
Pardon me?
I mean, you're talking about milling our own grain and doing? We have a state mill.
Okay, yeah, we could use that.
Well, so I mean.
That's fine.
So that's the first step, so.
Okay, if you look at this one, there's this lady who is ambitious, she has on her refrigerator, maybe you could read what she said, Commissioner Carlo. It's right there on her refrigerator. I can't read that. It talks about a woman. You see that?
I sure do, but I can't read it either, sir.
She talks about, I, I think a quiet woman never got too far in life.
It says, well.
Okay, I, I base it up more profoundly than I did, so. But I, I intend this to be really short. I didn't have a chance to really look into it, but I know enough that we need to make steps to get, let's start putting advertisements in trade magazines. See if we can get companies up here. People are itching to come, they got to have a place to go, and Dickinson is, Stark County is the place to go.
I can read it. I can read it. It says, a well-behaved woman seldom makes history.
What made?
It says, a well-behaved woman, no, whatever. Yep. Seldom makes history.
Well, you know, a man always likes a well-behaved woman. So I guess you have to take both of it.
Maybe these, these ideas, you should take them before Stark Development Department. Stark Development, they, they're the people that go out searching?
Stark Development, they got their own territory that they're covering. This is something that's huger than, than Stark Development. Okay, I'm, I guess I'm wrong about that, Neil.
Development is the economic development arm of Stark County.
Well, what, they're going to take a building downtown, this is bigger, a lot bigger than renovation.
They, they bring businesses to this.
Okay, maybe I could learn something from that. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
With this board, I would just like permission to ask to look into an expert at CUP and bring the cost of that to the next meeting, please.
I'd like that.